All right, it is seven o'clock, so we will go ahead and start our meeting this evening. And welcome on this soon-to-be rainy night in atmospheric river. I hope everybody drives home carefully. And welcome to our joint meeting, the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. And it's February 12th. I would like to start this meeting with, as soon as I find my notes, introductions. We, I'm John Deloso, I am your mayor. Nice to have you all here, and for those of you watching this evening. Vice Mayor Wendy Skilman is to my left. And we have council members Mark Landman, Susan Harvey, and John Moore. And city staff that's here tonight, they don't need to wave if they don't want to, but they are welcome to do whatever they'd like. Our city manager, Damian O'Good. I should not have prompted you, should I? It was my mistake, okay. Our city attorney, Robin Donahue. Chief Police, Michael Parrish. Our city engineer and director of public works, the longest title in the city, Craig Scott. Oh, nope, not here tonight. Our administrative services director, Angela Quarter. Nice to have you here this evening. And our city clerk, Lauren Burgess. With that, could we have an official roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Deloso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here. And I'd like everyone to join in the pledge of allegiance. We're going to have our honorary mayor, Madison, come up and lead us in that here at the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Madison, for that. Appreciate it. We'll hear from you in just a little bit. We are now at item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Move to approve?
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will, say all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We're 5-0. There, it's official. Perfect. All right, now we roll into reading the announcements without my wife's cheaters. This is going to be interesting. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they want. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the community development department at City Hall as part of the Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit them at sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, and that's N-I-X-L-E dot com. And finally, the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatisity.org. Do we have any additional announcements from council members? Nothing? All right. We will now go into item six, which is our honorary mayor. So we'd like to welcome Madison Monroe from Ranch Kattati High School. And we'd like you to come up to the podium. I know I kind of queued you up on this, but this is going to be really easy. There's no need to be nervous. And we do have all of the cameras on, though, so there, just in case. And we just, we want to hear about what goes on at school, what goes on in your daily life, so take it away.
So I'm a sophomore at Ranch Kattati High School. I just, there, I just finished my second year of junior varsity soccer, where we went under vegan league. I also run both varsity cross-country and track. I started track in sixth grade at Lawrence Jones and fell in love. I then started running cross-country, and I'm now recognized as first all-team for our league. My goal is to get a scholarship and run in college. While playing sports is very important to me, school is as well. I put my time management to the test and opted to take five advanced placement or honors classes. I'm currently maintaining a GPA of 4.35 and ranking fifth in my class. I'm a dedicated and hardworking person who is always pushing myself to be my best. For this reason, I became sophomore class council president for the 2018-2019 school year. There, I worked with the rest of my amazing council to raise money for our class. I've decided to run for class president again next year, while I will take on yet another task of planning homecoming and prom. I also regularly volunteer at Richard Crane Elementary in classrooms and family fun nights, because I love working with kids and being involved in my community. I help out my community in other ways by participating in creek cleanups and Kids' Day parades and the Founder's Day Parade. I cannot wait to see what beautiful things happen next to the city of Kattati. Thank you.
It sounds like you're not really that busy, but, you know, keeping that in mind, we're going to just stay up there. We're going to have a few questions and comments for you, and then we'll let you go, I promise. We'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Welcome, Madison. Thank you for coming and participating as honorary mayor. It sounds like you're not an overachiever or anything, but it sounds like you're doing a lot of things, and good luck with the sports and with all the AP classes and your sports background. Do you have an idea what you're looking at down the road?
I want to be a pediatrician, because I like working with kids, and yeah.
Well, that's fantastic. And I think it's great that you're helping out with Kids' Days and Richard Crane and things like that. It's good to have good community volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, welcome. Wow, you are a very, very busy person. I'm really interested in a little bit more on why you chose pediatrician. That's really excellent that you want to do that. What drives you in that direction?
Like I said, I really like working with kids. I like science, for sure. I personally have a fear of shots, and so, for me, it's like, I could sympathize with a lot of kids and like a bunch of different problems and stuff, and help them get through it.
That's awesome. You might want to consider, I know you're like really busy and have a lot of stuff going on, but you might want to consider volunteering at the hospital, too. Or I know some of the local pediatric departments also have helpers, too, so. Might be something you might want to consider, if you can fit a few minutes in.
Thank you.
But thank you for being our honorary mayor.
I think what Councilmember Harvey is suggesting is sleep is overrated. Let it go. Councilmember Landman?
Well, I wanted to ask you, tell us a little more about these five AP classes you're taking.
I'm taking AP World History, which is my first AP class as a high schooler. It was definitely a lot to jump into. We have a chapter of textbook notes every week on top of our other seven classes. I'm taking Human Body Systems, which is recognized as a UC-level course. I'm taking Algebra or Geometry Honors, English Tang Honors, and Spanish Two Honors.
Wow, that's impressive. I share your fear of thoughts. When you become a pediatrician, don't do what my pediatrician used to do when I was little. Every time it was time for a shot, he would hide the needle behind his back when he came up, or hide it in a huge ball of cotton. And I knew I had to get the shot eventually, but I demanded, I wanted to see how big that needle was. So at least I think you should be honest with him when the time comes. Nice to meet you, Madison.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Hi, and welcome.
Hi, thank you.
So I was going to ask you about the, your sports interests. You got into running, and you said, I think you said you started that in middle school?
Yes, fifth grade.
Gotcha. And then, and you still, you're maintaining that throughout?
Yeah, I just actually started my first day of track practice today.
Oh, my gosh. It's just a little chilly out. Oh, my.
Just a little bit.
Wow. No, that's, that's, it really takes a lot of dedication, and I think it's, it's great to have that kind of outlet where, you know, you're sitting, you're studying, you're doing a lot of brain work, and then to be able to get out and to exercise and, you know, get that, I think that's great that you have that balance. So, good for you, keep that up. And I would concur as well. The first time, I was fine with shots until my doctor hit it behind her back, and I was like, my gosh, it must be really bad. But, but, yeah, so, well, that's great, too, that you've got this experience working with kids, and so you'll be able to kind of figure out where they are developmentally and how to talk to them and stuff, so. I wish you all the luck. This is really a fantastic goal for you.
You know, it's interesting talking about shots. I guess, let's just go there for a little bit, shall we? You know, I'm not, I've never been afraid of getting shots, not an issue. But to this day, if somebody's wearing an earring and they kind of tug on it like this, I get that close to passing out. I really don't get the correlation. You might want to just study that a little bit.
Okay.
There could be something there. Or maybe I'm just a unique case, which I've been told, and I don't really want to hear anymore about that. Okay, Madison, do you prefer Maddie or Madison?
Maddie.
Maddie? So we'll call you Maddie in two weeks when you do come back. Yeah, and you know, the volunteering you do, which is huge and wonderful, we have a number, as you know, the Kids' Day Parade, we have a number of events that go on through our recreation department. And Ashley Wilson is who that person is, and if you could contact her, or maybe you have, there's a ton of stuff. And I know you guys in high school have to do so many hours of community services, it's still 40?
It's 40, yeah.
Forty, yeah, which goes by like that. You can do, you know, a couple of events, and boom, you're done. So just keep that in mind, tell your friends, because we're always looking for, you know, help in some of the different events that are going on there. And the fact that you are president of your council, and you're going to run again next year, so, is there a minimum age for city council? Keep that in mind, your time will come, no doubt. Okay, then I did warn you about this, the homework assignment. I already kind of warned you about it, so here it is. We always like to hear from our honorary mayors about maybe activities that either don't exist, or you have to go into Rona Park to find them, and it's not like we can snap our fingers and make them happen. But some of them, you know, have come to fruition over the years. So if you talk to your friends at school, in the neighborhood, and say, hey, you know, is there something missing for kids our age that would be really cool if it was here? We'd love to hear that when you come back in a couple of weeks, so just keep that in mind. And do you have anybody in the audience that might have, let's just say, driven you here or something like that?
My dad is actually in the audience, back there in the blue.
Excellent, all right, great. Thank you very much. We will see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. And I, remember, I warned you, too, that you don't have to stay for the entire meeting. It's not a prerequisite, so you're free to go, school nights. All right, we are on item seven, which is presentations, and I believe we have an introduction from our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, I wanted to introduce you to Angela Quarter, on my right here, who you might have met briefly before the meeting. She's our new administrative services director, and she was Norm's partner in moving things forward in budgeting, auditing, and putting new processes and policies in place to ensure that we have continued excellence in fiscal reporting. And we always, always knew that Angela was very good, but even after an extensive recruitment process, she rose to the top, and we're very lucky to have her here with us tonight. And a little bit about her background, she graduated here locally from SSU with a degree in business administration and accounting, and is a licensed CPA. She began her career with Deloitte and Touche, performing audits and financial, of financial statements and internal controls, financial controls. She later worked as a senior accountant for another firm, performing audits of both private and public organizations, as well as producing full financial statements and performing system conversions, like accounting system type stuff. And then she's been with the city since 2016, and as I mentioned earlier, been at the center of everything we've done in administrative services for the last two and a half years, so she's been in the thick of it, and very impressive. With that, I'll just say that again, I'm happy that we have her here, and I look forward to continuing to do great things in admin services to push forward our goals of excellence in financial reporting and customer service. And with that, I'll just give it to her for a minute, if she has anything to add.
Well, I'm glad to be here tonight in this new role for myself, and I am glad that I'm only three minutes' drive down the road. I'm a Kattati resident, county technically, but within the zone, so I'm glad to be a part of this and moving my career forward and working hard for the city of Kattati. So I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Well, we'll start by saying welcome, and you're going to work really hard for the next 20, 20 to 25 years.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Other than that, any other questions or comments? Angela, welcome, though.
Just welcome.
I was just going to say, congratulations, and it's a good thing you don't have any big shoes to try to fill, national awards and things like that. You'll fit right in.
Yeah, she'll have no problem filling them, I'm sure.
All right, great, thank you. We are now at item eight, which is approval of final agenda. Do we have any changes?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. And now, we will move to item nine, which is citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. I do have a card here. Mr. Barich?
My name is George Barrick, and I have authorized Lori Alderman to speak on my behalf as her attorney, in fact. I am a former city councilman in Kattati who served with honor and distinction. I was offered a bribe by members of the city council in 2009 to go along and get along with a socialist agenda, and in return, I would be appointed mayor in 2010. But I refused the bribe and chose to fulfill my campaign promises to clean up Kattati and make it a respectable city again. I was praised by Democrats and Republicans alike for bringing diversity of thought to the city council, because a city government without diversity of thought is sick and doomed to fail. We have seen that just 10 years of the downtown specific plan, our town is running out of time to make good on this 30-year plan to transform our downtown with the help of state and federal funding. The funding has not come to Kattati but for a mere $1.1 million from the Obama's administration. The DSP costs estimates were whopping $73 million over 30 years in 2009. So I voted against it and gave all my reasons why. It's clear that after a decade, that DSP is going, is not going to happen, and it's time to repeal the DSP and stop the deception once and for all. Kattati does not need four-story hotels and demonstration farms. We want to preserve Kattati's small-town charm in a town where the streets dwarf the buildings. But this January, my heart is with, February, my heart is with all homeless in Kattati that John Moore says doesn't exist. I am talking about the SSU students who are homeless, living and sleeping out of their cars and vans, the transients that come and go from Kattati on a regular basis, and the temporary homeless, which include citizens that are told to leave their homes because of domestic dispute with their spouses or roommates on the orders of our police officers. These people will, are all technically homeless citizens and taxpayers, deserving of your recognition and respect. These people matter. They are not human garbage, as John Moore suggests. I agree with Mayor Deloso that this matter should be placed on an upcoming agenda before someone dies from the freezing cold and rain in Kattati. Kattati has meeting rooms adjacent to the City Hall that go unused, and that's...
Thank you very much, Mr. Barich. And I do want to say, we've talked about this the last two council meetings.
There is no city council, there is no city rule about proxies. You know that. I've sent that email.
We will, we will have that, we will have that for you. You will read it, and I just...
No, there is no city council rule.
Your time has been allotted to you.
Well, you're, you're debating something with me, which should give me enough time. The city attorney is not always right.
All of us are not always right. That's a very good point. Is there anyone else for citizens' business? Ms. Alderman?
Again, once again, we only have a few citizens in the, in the, in the audience. One is a planning commissioner. This is because of your treatment of how you treat us citizens. Mr. Moore, last meeting, said that a public record of calling me a derogatory name did not exist. It did exist. Then, your bought-and-sold community voice censored my letter to the email asking for, letter to the utter, asking for his public apology. I have waited eight months now for an apology. For a city, it was on a city email account. He, there is no excuse for that. You shouldn't be, you should, he should be put up on ethics charges for doing that. It's wrong. Mr. Landman, another, public records request showed that he does business using his personal email account, not his city email account. He did it another time with Greg Herker on, and he's, to Damian, on his, about a public records request. This is highly unethical. Why are you, you three have to get together and do some ethics, or you're not going to have anybody coming in this chamber anymore, because they're tired, people are tired of seeing you bully me, George, everyone, and get, and have these shows of agendas that are all about you and not what the citizens want. You don't get, it, it, people aren't going to care about things on the agenda like the Cassick thing. That is about your county jobs. You need to think about what Kattati citizens need. You're also into your Sonoma Clean Power and Mr. Political Action Committee-funded election, not citizens. You know, you need to, I call you now Pac-Man, by the way. You need to be not so concerned about the county positions. You need to deal with the city to get anybody back in this, in this chamber. So now I'd like to go on to consent.
Consent, you have items, which items, please?
Consent, item 10, I wanted to speak on A and C.
A and C, okay. We'll start the clock over again, go for it.
Okay. On the St. Joseph Water Main replacement, we are already spending $5 million. We have, $1 million is being, is being borrowed from affordable housing, and you only bring in $2 million in sewer and water fees a year. So you're vesting all this money. Now, there wants to, there's something like $100,000 more at the hotel site. Why is that the developer paying for that? He's saying, I'm the press Democrat, he's, he's building a hotel in Kattati, even there's not been a single official public notice on it. But you guys keep putting more money into this sewer. It's on St. Joseph Way is this additional $100,000 or so. That is wrong. You, you, these, you need to be getting these from the developer. If he needs it more, if there needs to be more lines on St. Joseph Way because of the hotel, he needs to be paying. The other one is the West School Street pathway. I sure hope that somebody actually goes out and looks this time. The engineering has been stupid out there. You have a cutaway, this, this is money specifically for access and everything. You have a cutout that goes to rocks. No wheelchair, no walker can go over rocks. That's right at Clifford. That's where you stopped, you didn't look. Then, two doors down is a severely disabled woman down West School Street who needs a sidewalk. She, that's where that money should be going. She, her van has to, she doesn't go down, it's a hill to, they can't put down the ramp right. That's where this money should be going, not on West Richardson, I mean, Richardson Lane at the end. You need to be vesting this money to find the property lines for continuing farther down West School Street, so that that can be addressed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on citizens' business or consent items at this point? All right, seeing no one, I will close that public hearing. We will move to item 10, the consent calendar, and we have items A, B, C, D, and E. Are there any items to be pulled?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, none? Okay. We are on item 11, direction on future agenda items. Do we have any? I'll look down this direction first, Mr. Landman, no?
Um, I, just one, quick one, and I think we brought it up before, but there had been mention of PG&E funding, which may become, I guess, a moot point at this point, but for additional charging stations. And this is not just because that all three are being used this evening and my car is low. I really did notice it before, I promise. But anyway, that, that just prompted me to remember that we had mentioned it once before, so just wanted to bring it up under future agenda. Thank you.
Great, all right. Councilmember Harvey, any items, future agendas? Councilmember Moore?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so that's it for item 11. We are now on item 12, public hearings. First item is conversion of design review committee to design review administration. I believe our city manager will take that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I know you all know this, but just for the benefit of maybe the audience or the audience at home, the primary function of design review is to provide design review recommendations to the planning commission for what's called preliminary design review, as well as for larger projects, final design review. In some cases, for smaller projects, planning commission also does. The planning commission approves design review in all cases, but in some cases, planning commission also approves final design review, generally for the smaller projects. For the larger ones... For the larger ones, though, they do go back to the design review committee for approval. And then they also, they also are the approval body for master sign permits. So those are really their main functions. And design review is an important function, which would be retained with the proposed changes in the ordinance that's attached as Exhibit A to the ordinance. And the changes are all in red lines straight out, so you can see what's, what's changing through the municipal code. For entitlement applications, these are development projects that require discretionary approvals. The change in the design review process will allow earlier involvement of third-party design professionals as needed and reduce the overall time, the time of the overall process and the cost of the meetings. And it should result in a better outcome for design elements and make the process less onerous for applicants. And so, for example, for projects that do not require city council approval, generally those projects, they don't have a new map, they're not subdividing property, or they don't require an agreement with the council, with the city, then the proposed design review process will reduce entitlement meetings from three down to two. This assumes planning commission, then a final design review meeting at planning commission. So it would just come back to planning commission for a second trip, which I think may be, you know, may be desirable from a planning commissioner's standpoint, because the project that you just essentially approved will then come back to you for the final, like, signs and lighting and that sort of thing, rather than going off to a separate body. And then, other, other changes, like the master sign permits, would be retained at the director level, and appeals would be, would be sent to the planning commission for director-level decisions. And that is, that is essentially it. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have something specific on the proposed changes.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council, for staff? Looking this direction first, I'm seeing no's this direction. Seeing even more no's. All right. With that, we will open up public comment and see if anybody has any comments they'd like to make on this issue. And nobody wants to talk about it. All right. Well, then I'll start a conversation. You know, one thing I want to bring up separate from, you know, kind of any final decision here, if council is okay and if we're moving in this direction, that I'd really like to send a letter from the mayor, you know, to each design review committee member, thanking them for their service. You know, any, any city committee, commission, it takes time out of people's day and nights, typically, and, you know, they've gone the extra effort. So I, I think I'd like to do that if council is okay with having that kind of direction given. I'm seeing yeses from everybody. Okay, so that's fine. And we do have an introduction of an ordinance, so I will, are there any comment, further comments from anybody? I mean, it seemed pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
Councilmember?
Just a quick thanks in particular. A lot of people have served, but in particular Sally Glendenning. I think she's been there the entire nine, 10 years I've been involved with this city, volunteering her time, as well as obviously Tim Morgan, Eris Weaver, and everybody else. But in particular, having that outside architect voice volunteering to be there and add a little bit of outside expertise was very valuable. So I agree 100%. I think some sort of recognition would be very valuable for everybody that served.
Right. I certainly work with the city manager's office. I'm usually one of those that likes to type his own letters, but we'll draw straws on this one here, and we'll see where it goes. Yes, councilmember Harvey?
And my understanding is, is where that expertise is needed. We will reach out and use those, those experts, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Sally may not be totally off the hook.
Right. Yeah, that's correct.
Especially since she knows our community and she's been very involved for so long, so.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. The design review process is an important element in the entitlement review. So we'll, I mean, it's going to be retained, it's just in a slightly different form.
Waiting for any kind of a motion.
Make a motion that we introduce an ordinance to convert the design review committee to a design review administration.
I'll second that. Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That's a 5-0 vote. And with an additional direction that we'll have a letter going out to each member as well. Great. Thanking them for their service. All right. Thank you. We're now on to item 13 on the regular agenda. And the first item is our mid-year budget review. All right. The fire is on. Okay, the city manager wants to start, maybe?
Well, I'm just gonna only say that Angela will be taking the lead on this, so.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm pleased to present to you our 1819 mid-year budget and review. And this is a comparison of our budget to actuals for the last six months up to December 30th, 2018. Perfect, thank you. So the key points that we're going to cover in the mid-year review are an overall of the city, the economic outlook, which is both on a national, state, and a local level, the general fund overview of the revenues and expenditures to date, as well as the enterprise funds, which are broken out between the water and sewer. And each one of the general fund and the enterprise funds, we do touch on the capital projects that are included within those. There we go. I'll get to know the computer eventually. So for our city overview, overall, our revenues and operating expenditures are considered on target. We're well within the revenues and expenditures based on what we know is going on with the city. And we'll go into that in further detail in the following slides. For the fiscal year 1819, just a overview of our adopted budget, so our adopted budget was, was within a balanced budget and includes our 25% contingency reserve. And it has included within our strong fiscal management of our public resources. We're going to continue to prioritize all the strategic investments that we've gone over for our budget planning, preserving and enhancing the vital services that we offer, and especially incorporating Measure G and its most, its required uses, and pursuing opportunities for efficiency and transparency going forward. Our economic update, overall, even though we're seeing some insecurities in the national economy, it is still strong and it is still moving forward. It's a little bit slower pace, but that's why we see the thorough reserve is kind of pulling back on reducing, or sorry, increasing the rates. As far as we're looking stateside, in California, the housing market's still strong, but it is slowing down because of the fewer foreign buyers we're seeing, as well as the increasing interest rates. Locally, we're still seeing an unknown impact in revenue from the marijuana sales tax and how that's playing out in our local economy. Our employment, unemployment rate is continuing to decline, which is in line with our expectations of what we're seeing going on with more jobs that are available and that need for the employees to meet those needs. However, with the housing, due to the fires and other inventory and affordability crisis within the area, we're seeing a hardship and more of a movement outside of Sonoma County. Locally in Katati, the median sales price of single homes continues to rise, as well as the rental market has continued to increase significantly over the last year. And we're going to kind of skip into just the general fund. Overall, our revenues are approximately $3.8 million, which is approximately 51% of our annual budget. And on the flip side, we all have similar expenditures at the $3.8 million, which is only within 47% of our budget for the year. So this, again, is showing that same picture, kind of broken out between our overall revenues versus what we have transfers in from other special revenue sources. And compared to the budget that transfers in is from our police force. So it's really an expenditure reimbursement that we get from a special revenue fund. So it's showing that our revenues are in line at 51% for just our overall, and we'll go into further detail about the specific revenues, as well as our expenditures and our transfers out are 41% of the total, 47%, excuse me. So here's a summary of our funding sources that are coming in for our general fund. So the most significant pieces of the revenues, of course, for us are the property taxes, as well as our sales taxes. The property taxes are at 61% for the mid-year, and then sales taxes, a little bit farther behind at 43%. And we'll get into that with the next slide down the road. But all the rest, overall, come in at about 51% of our overall budget for mid-year. And comparing the current year to the prior mid-year, we just had a slight, it's really in line, again, same story, just a different picture comparing year over year, where you see we have that 1% increase over the prior year. And that's primarily, again, due to the increase in property taxes, as well as the other, I believe, other taxes. There's a big jump there, and that's our cannabis business taxes there. So here's really our story about our property taxes, comparing it from budget, our current years for the six months versus our prior year for the six months. You can see that it's continued to increase, and that is, again, that story of our, our properties are increasing in value, as well as the pop eight, excuse me, yeah, turnover. So then our sales tax, on the other side, you'll see that it has declined slightly over the prior year. And it, and this is anomalous, and we're considering this really on track, because the state did create a new taxing group that they rolled out last year, beginning of the fiscal year, where they've received all their sales tax in, but they're having a hard time pushing it out on a timeline basis. So they're seeing this across the board. They did try to do some catch-up payments out to the city, but unfortunately, we're still lagging behind on getting those receipts in. So we didn't feel like it was appropriate to book revenues that we're not sure quite when they're coming in, but they, we know that they're there, they've been received, and we've worked with our consultants on auditing those and making sure that we're in line for our sales tax receipts for the year. Let's get a jump on the expenditures. So overall, again, our operating expenditures are in line by our operating expenditure types. So this breaks it up between our different categories that you would see on our budget book within each department. So we have the salaries and benefits, contract services, and other transfers outs, again, are a big piece of the expenditures for the general fund. Salaries and benefits, again, are just a smid higher, but again, are considered on track because of, we know the timing of expenses and when they are coming in and going out. I don't know if there's anything else. And again, so the repairs and maintenance, you see that that's at the 68%, but those repairs and maintenance are things that were needed during those times and aren't expected to be needed again until later time. Now we're on summary by department. So here's just another view of those same expenditures that are broken out between each one of the general fund departments. Again, well within budget at the 47% total bottom, and each department is within that, you know, 51%, 50%. So it's considered in line and tracking really well to where we would like to see them. So here's just another summary on those expenditures analysis and that, and another view of where the budget is compared to the mid-year actual for each one of those departments. So you can see that they're all about midway along the line and where they should be. And all the, all the departments and all the expenditure types, each way you look at it, are considered to be really on track, given the timing of payments and the projects we have going on. So now, we're going to jump into the enterprise funds. So the water and sewer funds, we'll start with the water funds, where the revenues are at 49% of our budget, and the expenses are at 44% of the budget, as compared to the sewer fund, where we're about the same, but the sewer, you'll see, has the 49% of budget, and the expenses are at 49% of the budget, primarily due to the capital projects we have going on at this time. So the water fund, excuse me, I have a cool picture of the water. So charges for services are overall up by $35,000 or 4% over the prior year. You'll notice that the mid-year here, we have, we're at 0% for the connection fees, and that's really just due to the timing of our development. So we know that those are, they're going to be happening. We're hoping, you know, they're coming in. We just don't have them in yet. So those are in line with what we know is going on in the city. Compared to the expenses, we have, they're up about $58,000 or 8% from the prior year, primarily due to the increased aqueduct charges for use. And then, again, the debt payments down below, you'll see, are a little bit higher on average, and that's simply due to a one-time payment that we had, where we made an excess payment for the inter-fund debt payments from the sewer, sorry, from the water to the sewer. Here's just a graphical showing of the monthly water charges for services. You can see that the charges for services really are just on a slight incline, incline year over year for the same periods. And it's primarily due to increased usage from the drought. And then, there is, of course, our rate increase, which was implemented in order to address the infrastructure needs. And here, this correlates to the statement on the water usage. So you can see, over the last three years, the same period, compared, we have increased water usage for the period. Again, November and December, always a little bit less, because we have more rainfall, people turn off their irrigation. But July through October are really kind of our peak season when we're using more water, and so it's continuing to grow over the prior years. So overall, water revenue is still on track, adjusting for the timing of these development projects. The expenses are in line with expectations and are primarily made up of the aqueduct water usage and the utilities that are required in order to run our wells. So the PG&E, everything that's needed to run that. Significant sources and uses, that's that debt payment, is really due to the timing of that debt payment that we made. And the major capital improvement projects we still have ongoing are the SCADA project for water. Here's our sewer fund. So again, overall, revenues are right in line with our expectations, where the charges for services, again, have increased due to increased rates and usage, and where the connection fees are less, just due to the timing of the projects on hand. The expenditures follow right in line with our treatment costs, our expectations of the, the payments for that, as well as our operation costs in-house. We do have the 91% of the total other sources and uses, and that is directly derived from the transfers in, which is, as you can see, there is a zero for the mid-year actual to budget, and that's because that will be an adjustment that is booked at year-end when the P1 project is completed. Will then create those debt payments to be, for the inter-fund transfers, to fund the P1 capital improvement project, which we are moving right along on. And you can see down in the capital improvements, where it shows it's approximately, what is that, one-third, we're 40% complete? So overall, the sewer revenue is still on track and adjusted for the timing of the development projects. Expenses are really in line with our expectations and are really made up of that sewer treatment cost. Um... cost. The significant sources and uses, though they are at ninety-one percent, it's due to those timing of the transfers in and the transfers out in order to cover the capital projects. And the major capital improvement projects that we do have going on are that P1 pipeline as well as this SCADA sewer project. So overall conclusion, the first two quarters of this fiscal year are right on track with our budget, before we're in line with what our initial strategy and expectations were. The city staff is going to continue to update the council for any unforeseen changes that, or forecasting changes that are needed. And we're really committed to exercising prudence and integrity in our management role for the public funds and provide the transparent and accountability for its use. That concludes my presentation.
Excellent, thank you. First presentation, you aced it. Council, do we have any questions or comments? I'm going to start on my right-hand side, and Councilmember Moore?
I might defer to my fellow councilmember, Harvey, because I know she likes to sharpen her pencil, but I do have a couple of questions, maybe. Okay. One of the things that was pretty glaring in this, and I don't know that you would have an answer to this. If you look back at the Cattati median rent increased thirty-five percent in one year, that's pretty significant. And do we, where do we get that figure from? Is that just from Sonoma County Economic Development, or are you familiar with that?
Which, sorry, which number was that?
The rent increase percent.
Oh, the rent increase percent. Yes, so that was from a county report that we, that was pulled from, and I also believe I pulled it from an independent online resource. I can pull the specific feed for where that was from and research that. I do not have that with me right now.
My concern on that, and I don't know that we necessarily have to get into the source on that, but I would speculate that a lot of it has to do with the fires in the housing and the, dare I say, gouging of renters in the area. And that might be something that we might look at down the road, if that's something that's within our purview, unless the horse is already out of the barn on that one. But it was a startling, you know, number there on that one. And then the other issue that I have, and maybe I just didn't understand it when I was reading through the packet, on the water and sewer funds, when you looked at the other sources and the interest earnings, and we budgeted four thousand on the water funds, and then we earned eighteen thousand, that's a four hundred and seventy-two percent interest. Ian, can you explain that a little bit more?
I think it's just that we, with interest in particular, some things like that, we budget extremely conservatively, because you never, you're never really sure what the rate of return is going to be on your interest earnings. So rather than project something that's going to be too high and fall short of it, we generally project interest much lower, and it's a good surprise when the interest rates are higher.
Do you, I don't recollect what the interest earned last year was versus this year, mid-year. Are you familiar with what that difference might be?
It's, you know, it's been gradually improving, because especially during the recession and the tail end, interest rates were rock bottom. No matter where you put your money, you basically couldn't get anything in terms of rate of return on it. Since the economy has been, has been improving for the last, like, eight years now, interest rates have gradually been climbing, and especially since the Fed started increasing rates, interest rates, the inter-fund rate between banks, that's also caused the interest rates in general to increase. So it's been improving. I mean, the short answer is it's been improving, particularly over the last couple of years. And I think, you know, we'd expect it to continue to improve.
And with some of our inter-fund loans, that wouldn't account for that, would it? So these are just the reserves sitting earning four hundred and eighty-two percent interest for that short period of time.
Right, so most of our, like, most of our reserve funds are in, like, the local agency investment fund, the state manages, the LAIF they call it, and some other places like that, that typically have slightly higher than interest rates than what we'd have in the operating account, like, our operating account at Exchange Bank. That's a pretty transactional bank account, and generally doesn't accrue much interest.
And those investments are relatively conservative.
Yes, yeah, they're very conservative.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say that another way for you?
Sure.
So if you were to go back and look at, you know, our budgets over the last, I don't know, five, six years, there were many years that we had in the investments in all the accounts and all the interest earnings. For many years, we had zeros in there because we really, it was so low that our guess at what it actually would be was just that, a guess, because it was practically nothing. So I think that the explanation of them conservatively doing it and then basically us actually getting the true number, that really is what we get, that's what we've earned. So I think that they have tended for the last, at least five or six years, to be very conservative on that number in the budget, and then just posting the actuals when the actuals come in later. So it's not that we, in the budget, depend upon that money, but it is money, then, that we will have to use in the long run, if that makes any sense. We're not counting on it, so we're putting it at a smaller number in the budget, because we're not depending upon that interest earning.
Right, but when you go from a near zero, one percent below, or in that neighborhood, to four hundred and seventy-two percent.
Well, but it's, it went from zero to four thousand dollars. It was zero, the budget number, in many years, for a while, was zero. We showed nothing as interest earnings, even though at the end of every year, we got a little bit, but it wasn't very much. So I think that the percentage number ends up looking like a huge number. It just is, just the way the mathematics work of it.
Yeah, I'll just add that percentages, percentages, you always have to take with a grain of salt, because a small change of a small number, a big percent, whereas a large change of a big number can be a small percent. So you just take that with a grain of salt.
Yeah, this would be more like a pound of salt, but that's okay. It just struck me as quite the anomaly on there.
Yeah. Councilmember Harvey?
I have no questions. I do like the, I don't know what you want to call it, the more narrative report that was in there. I'm hoping that there'll be a way for us to provide that to the public, because I think that that is a better way for people to understand it in a written story, rather than, you know, the numbers, you know, kind of on a chart, don't necessarily mean anything to someone. And as pointed out by Councilmember Moore's comment, you know, seeing changes in percentages and seeing percentages of things sometimes doesn't give the story the way, the way this narrative does. So I hope that we, you know, be it next door, be it on our, on our website, our Facebook, whatever, I think we need to get this out. I think it's probably a little bit big when I look at it to, to actually, like, do something like put it in our water bills, but, but I think it does give the transparency that we need and does tell a verbal story, which is, I think, important for people to see. And you made a comment about the water on there. The water, in the meetings at the water agency, it's been a topic that gets discussed a lot because, because we're not in the drought anymore. People have started to adjust their behaviors a little bit, and so that's why the Water Saving Partnership has, is continuing with their education on that, because it, it doesn't mean that we're totally never going to have a drought again and we're never going to have to, to save water. It's an ongoing education and training and keeping people thinking about it and, and conserving water for the long term. So anyways, that's all I have to say about that. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. Councilmember Lambon?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to agree with my colleagues. Having the narrative combined with the tables really just does equal maximal transparency, and I know the public certainly appreciates that, but I know we do as well. So thank you for the extra work to bring that forward. Quick question, and I'm going to go right off what you were mentioning about the water. The charges passed on from Sonoma Water, basically their cost capital improvements. We had a few years ago assessed that that was averaging out roughly at about six percent a year, and that's what we've been planning. Is it continuing to hold to that? That's kind of a question, I suppose, whoever has the latest information on that.
The water agency continues to, through their budgeting project, process, try and keep it in that four to six percent range. And as you know, sometimes that means that they have to adjust some of the expectations for capital projects that they want to do, but they are going to continue to try to keep within that range. Craig might have more, because he's probably working on the budget right now as we speak.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harvey. The subcommittee on the budget for the water agency has been, we're looking at our, having our second meeting in a couple of weeks, and so we are looking right at the, the first one came in about just under six percent, and we're getting it down to about five percent is what it's currently looking at. And then we will have a future presentation by the water agency at our March twenty-six council meeting, when we'll, we will have had it dialed in and make that recommendation.
Well, I'm just going to say it's good to have the chairman of the WAC here, the chairperson of the WAC, as well as the person working on the budget. Thank you for that information, that's good to know.
Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions for staff?
No, I don't have any questions. I do appreciate the layout, and I'm definitely not a numbers person, so it's great to be able to see the narrative and then also see the charts and to get that all figured out. So thank you very much.
All right, and I certainly have no questions at this point in time, but I'm sure I'll have some comments later. So I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing on this, and I have a speaker card from Lori Ann Barber. And welcome.
I don't know if this is actually the right place to make this comment, but here I am, and we'll see what happens, because it's semi-budget related, and my comment is that I want to encourage the city council to consider, as you are looking into the next time you make the budget, to adopting, having the city use Evergreen Power from Sonoma Clean Power, which would be a slight increase, because Evergreen, probably most of you know, is the hundred percent renewable option from Sonoma Clean Power, our local power provider. And I think it's the right thing for the city to do, to be using Evergreen. The city of Sonoma already adopted that a couple of years ago, and the county is looking into having the county do that, and other cities are looking into it as well. And I think that it also would be moving in line with California increasing its renewable standard, and besides providing clean power, which is kind of important as we go forward and how we want to leave our planet to our children, it also provides cleaner air, and it's, the power is locally created, so it's bringing more local jobs, local revenue, and I just, like I said, I think it's the right thing to do. And I know it's not the thing to do right now, but I just kind of want to put it on your radar to something to consider. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the budget? Ms. Alderman?
It's nice to find out who Lori Barber is. When I first met George, he thought I was her. Anyway, the budget is very minimalist. It doesn't say anything about the projects going on, whether, what's being spent on the roads, what's all, very minimalist of a, so it's not really telling us very much, other than the basic government expenses are, are being met. But we could have overruns and all that kind of stuff, so, anyway. The other issue is, and I've asked for this, is the financial impact has not been done about the, it seems to be at least six of the cannabis businesses did not show, did not follow through and develop, and you can see community, community development fees, sewer connection fees are all under budget because these things didn't happen, and you guys have been silent about how, how this, the cannabis businesses did not come to fruition. And it's pretty much delayed any, any of your income or anything from cannabis for a year. Why haven't we heard anything on this? It just went out to the, a bid went out for the new six cannabis permits, I think it was six, I'm not, might be seven. But that won't come till May. Why is there no, no financial report that shows the fact of that lost income over the year? It's, well, from what I can tell is those businesses did the permits, did everything, and then decided it wasn't worth it or something, I don't know, and they all backed out. Well, you, we haven't heard, we didn't hear anything. I had to find it out through research to find this stuff, so we need, you need to deal with, be totally transparent on what the status of these businesses are, where the monies are coming from, you know, things like that, not just stay with the figures, but make analysis about what's happening in the city, like the effect of not having the cannabis industries. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
The state of California's current estimations of its unfunded liabilities right now is at one trillion dollars. The last Cattati mayor who addressed the issue of Cattati's unfunded liabilities was a man by the name of Jeff Fox. Been coming to these meetings since then, some twelve years, and that issue remains to be this big mystery in Cattati. So again, garbage in, garbage out when it comes to the numbers on our budget. And the unfunded liabilities of many of our California cities is a ticking time bomb. And I would also like to advise you, if you want answers from city staff, and you want them to have answers to your questions, and not blindside city staff during the meeting, wasting everybody's time and the public's time, is if you look at your city council, Cattati City Council members handbook, at least the one I own from two thousand and eight, says in there, best policy, so if you have any questions that you want answered from staff, is to give them those questions during the week before the meeting, so the staff has an adequate time to address those questions and get back to you in a timely fashion in preparation for your important council meeting. Now, if you have opinions and you want to have a lively discussion about budget, that's your prerogative. That's what we love to see from our leaders. But it is a sign of complete insecurity and lack of experience to be giving staff those kind of questions and have them have to fumble through their paperwork and tell city council members that, oh, I'll have to get back to you. Now we continue this to another meeting. I've brought this up so many times, I'm getting hoarse about it. You should know better. You all have cell phones, you have email, this is a talented group of staff members. I would advise you to use them effectively and stop blindsiding them. You're all, you're all capable of doing this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hancock?
Yes, good evening, council. Very nice, Neil Hancock, very nice to see the narrative form of the budget, so congratulations, that does really, really help. Again, this is probably not exactly within this budget, but I do want to bring up the whole issue of cyber- but I do want to bring up the whole issue of cybersecurity, just as a voice out there sort of saying, I think it is something that we need to keep an eye on, and particularly the SCADA systems. They need a different type of SCADA, cybersecurity. There is a lot of activity out there in probing SCADA systems. So, I think we need to, from, you probably heard about what happened in Ukraine. You probably heard about what happened in Iran as well, with no questions about who actually did that. But, so I would hope that we can keep our systems secure and that there's particularly a cyber policy as far as the, maybe that's a question, is there a cyber policy as far as the laptops that are used for the SCADA systems? Because obviously, if you have a laptop that ends up being dual usage, somebody is looking at the internet on one side and the SCADA systems on another side, it, it's just not very nice on Windows systems or on different types of systems. So, again, just bringing up the issue of cybersecurity, particularly as they apply to SCADA and also regular, you know, how do we, how do we account for that in the budget? And I know we're a mid-year budget, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We've covered everybody in the audience, but I'm going to ask one more time. Does anybody else have any additional comments they'd like to make? All right, seeing none, go ahead and close the public comment. Just a couple of notes that I jotted down that, again, this is a mid-year budget review, but very soon, we're going to be having our budget meetings for the next cycle. And some things that, just to bring to staff's attention, that would be good to have at those budget meetings, to find out some kind of an update on all of the cannabis permits, that would be good information. Unfunded liability, I think we've, the city has done a really good job in the last eight or so years now in minimizing that. Still a real issue. And I mean, the issues are obviously that people are living longer. Insurance rates are, do we even want to say going through the roof? Because literally, that's what they're doing. And so, it's, it's a tough battle. But, you know, to see what progress maybe we've made, the cybersecurity issue that just was brought up. And it would be nice for those budget meetings to have maybe an estimated figure of what using Evergreen Power would cost versus what we're using now. I think it could be, you know, at least if we had some hard dollar figures, it would be good to look at that, to then make a decision. Typically, I would guess it's going to cost more, these things do. But, you know, is it cost prohibitive or is it worth doing? Because there's a benefit to it as well. Thank you for your comments, everyone on that. So, with that, let's go, let's go around one last time and see if we have any comments. I'll start with Councilmember Landman.
Not right now, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Vice Mayor Skelton?
Yeah, I wanted to ask just two quick questions on the, I think it was on the water fund and the sewer fund. So, the, the water fund with the connection fees, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there were a lot of large construction projects that have been put on hold. I can think of two in particular. And those are going to be eventually generating the connection fees that we're hoping for. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. There was a mention about cannabis. It's totally unrelated to anything related to cannabis. It's home construction. So, the, it's, when you're forecasting for budgets, it's always a bit of a guess as to when exactly they're going to break ground on those projects. And by mid-year, they hadn't yet, so. We expect it in the second half of the year to start up.
Okay. And then, on the sewer fund, one of the capital projects is that include the St. Josephs that we just approved in the consent calendar today? Or is that going to be in the next budget cycle?
That, that would be, so the sewer side of things is included in the mid-year.
Okay.
For the P1, yeah. The, on the consent calendar tonight, that was a separate appropriation, that's post-mid-year. So, you'll see it in the estimated end of year.
Okay. But that, but that sticks to, because sewer projects have to be paid out of the sewer fund?
Correct.
Okay, because there was a comment earlier, I think, about housing money being transferred. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so that the, part of the funding for the sewer project was an interfund loan.
Oh, okay.
With the house, that's where the housing.
And then that goes back to it?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and the way the terms of the loan are structured is that the, the loan is funded once the project is complete, so that's why. You, you see the high, the 91%, you see the high percent there at mid-year. It doesn't mean it's actually 91% expended. It just means that the loan hasn't been funded yet until the project is reached, is completion.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
That it?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hardy? You have a very interesting look.
I thought, well, I thought I was clear, but then I thought I was confused. So, earlier, it was mentioned that what was on the consent calendar was associated with the P1 project. But that is nothing more, the way I understood it, as a timing thing, because we have everything open. It is a water project to increase the size of the water, the way I read it. Did I misunderstand that? And it has nothing to do with any of the development that is in that area. It's that, that was on the plan to do and while we have, the way I understood it, while we have everything open and while we have that capacity there, that it was more cost-effective for us to, to do it now. Did I not understand that correctly?
You're, you're correct. A couple of years ago, we were about to start the project, but were delayed for a variety of reasons. But now, we have a construction crew there, right there. And the whole area is dewatered and it's basically a good time to do it. And also, get ahead of any road reconstruction, which is slated to occur. Because you don't want, after the road's reconstructed, you don't want to go back in and trench through it. It's part of a loop that goes back to West Cattotti.
Okay. Then I did understand it correctly, thank you. Other than that, appreciate the budget. I appreciate the update and look forward to things staying on track. And I do like the things that you added for us to get some input on.
For the next budget.
For the next budget, thank you.
Councilmember Moore? No further questions, okay? Again, yeah, I have no further questions. Congratulations on, it was very succinct. I know in reading, you know, the full budget over the years that I've been on the council, it, it hurts my eyes, but it's understood and I, and I get it and it all makes sense. Because I am a numbers person, I really do like numbers. So, thank you for this, it was very concise and the narrative part is really a good thing to have, so. And so, we're, this is just a receive and file, so thank you. We'll move on to item 13B, which is the CASA Compact. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I'll just add, if you like numbers, there's more to come. Not on this items per se, but when we get a little later in the meeting, I have some fabulous more numbers for you. Okay, so CASA. Let me just start with a little bit of background, so we're all on the same page. I, I think it's been mentioned and everyone knows that the prices of housing in the Bay Area have dramatically increased, you know, certainly since the recession. And there's a lot of, in the Bay Area, housing has become, especially in the inner Bay Area, housing's become a crisis and it's, if you're not, you know, ultra-rich. And it's a, it's really a statewide problem, particularly in coastal regions of California, where the property is, you know, most of the population lives and so the property is more desirable and the jobs are being created. In the staff report, I mentioned there that just in the Nianton County Bay Area, area, since, since 2010, it's estimated that over 700,000 jobs have been added. Conversely, only about 100,000 new housing units have come online for a variety of reasons. Mostly, a lot of the housing issues, I mean, you could probably go back to the turn of the century when the initiative process was created in California. But more recently, I won't go down that rabbit hole right now, but more recently, with, in, in the 70s, housing and development in general was growing by leaps and bounds in California. And people were waking up and the, you know, the property across the street from them was being graded and they had no idea that that was happening. So, the voters, through a variety of initiatives, put a lot of things in place, mostly public disclosure, public hearing processes, things that would provide information to people so that these developments don't just pop up overnight seemingly to them. And this is when we had CEQA on a national level, NEPA was created. And then, a lot of the meeting processes that we have today came out of that time. And then, as part of that also, prop, so in the 70s, housing prices were also going up and people, particularly retired people on fixed incomes in coastal areas, were getting priced out of their homes because of the increases in property taxes. And Prop 13 was something that we all know about, that occurred, was one of the initiatives around that time, to try to keep people in their houses. And some things that happened with Prop 13 is it gave the state control of property tax, before it was a locally controlled tax. And even though it, it looks like a locally controlled tax, it's not. The state can control how that's dispersed. And it, it's created a, both sort of the legislative processes that have been created for many good reasons, but also the tax structure, which disincentivized house construction, has led to sort of a decades-long slowdown in construction and housing construction. And as we all know, it's, since the economy's been recovering, it's created this real pinch of housing and makes housing prices go up. So, in response to that long preface, in June of 2017, MTC and now ABAG, so those were two separate regional planning entities that merged. And in the last year, they became MTC slash ABAG. And they have different governing bodies, but they're basically housed in the same physical location. They, they share many of the same staff. They, they wanted to try to tackle the housing crisis. And so, they created this thing called, called the Committee to House the Bay Area. And it's otherwise known as CASA. So, June 2017, they start this up. CASA consists of two bodies, one is a technical committee and one's a steering committee. The technical committee is made of, well, technical people, consultants, staff of these agencies, and some staff of other agencies in the Bay Area, some municipalities, some nonprofits, people that are technically knowledgeable about housing issues. And their, their role was basically to try to develop recommendations in all elements of housing, both what they call the three Ps, preservation, production, and, produce, preserve, and protect. Thank you, protect is the last one. So, they, they were trying to come up with recommendations. And then, as they developed these recommendations, they go to what's called the steering committee. The steering committee was mostly comprised of local elected officials. There are some also large employers, like representatives from Facebook and some of the, some of those type of people were on the steering committee. The steering committee was headed by three co-chairs. One was kind of a, and I'll, it's in the, their names are in the staff report. It was Fred Blackwell, who is kind of a nonprofit, a community advocate, co-chair. Leslie Korsiglia, I think I probably mangled her last name. But she, she's more of a, like a policy wonk in the field of housing. And then, Michael Corahuvas, who's kind of a banking developer side of things. So, they were the three co-chairs, along with the former executive director of MTC ABAG, Steve Heminger. In Sonoma, for Sonoma County, we were represented by three elected officials. We were represented by Sonoma County Supervisor Rabbit, who's also the chair of ABAG. We were represented by Councilmember Julie Combs from the Santa Rosa City Council and also the Rona Park, Rona Park City Councilmember Jake McKenzie, who is also the chair of MTC. So, for Sonoma County, there, they were our representatives. So, the technical steering committee, the technical committee and the steering committee went back and forth on sort of these unformed proposals for a year and a half. And then, it all sort of kind of came together. On December 3, the Technical Working Group approved the CASA framework, which was really just a, like an Excel table of things. That then went on December 12, so nine days later, to the steering committee in a form similar to the report, sorry, this report that you see in the packet. And then, it was approved by the steering committee on that meeting. And then, following that, it went to MTC, where Jake McKenzie, who's the chair of MTC, was given authorization to sign the compact on December 19. So, we're moving quickly through the, through the meetings here. And then, finally, on January 17, it went to the ABAG Executive Board, where the ABAG Board Chair, David Rabbit, was giving, was given authorization to sign it. So, needless to say, was, there was a lot of policy proposals, it was kind of unformed. And then, it quickly came together and was approved over the course of a month. So, that in conjunction with, I think, the fact that there, by design, there was no outreach program, was why I think everyone's kind of surprised that it sort of appeared suddenly. Even though they knew it was being worked on, you know, in its various forms and elements, it sort of congealed and then was done over the course of a month. The, apparently, the, the plan was to do the outreach after the approval of the compact, and that's what you're seeing now. So, you're seeing MTC's reps going around. In December, there was a presentation to the RIN elected officials, or maybe it was early January, anyway, we'll get to that later. But they're, they're now taking the show on the road. But as you might expect, the state legislator, legislature has also been following it closely. And in the packet, there is an update that MTC put together as of earlier this month that has all the different compact elements, which we'll get into in a second, and the different legislative bills that have been introduced to try to implement various elements. So, it's, it's moving. And it's moving, and so tonight, we're going to talk about the compact itself, which is, which doesn't implement any laws, it doesn't implement any policies, it doesn't cause any new taxes to go into effect. It's literally a, a policy framework that they want to, that the intent was to provide to the state to implement at a policy level and then potentially implement regionally for the nine Bay Area region at a tax and fee level, to the extent that, that's moved forward regionally. So, so with that, I'll start, I'll get into the compact itself. So, it's a 15-year emergency policy package for the housing crisis. And as I think I mentioned, it wasn't necessarily intended for the state as a whole. It was intended for the nine Bay Area counties. And it was created, as I mentioned, by MTC NABAG via the stakeholder committees that we discussed. And also, as I mentioned, it doesn't actually enact any laws or policies and doesn't create any new regional funding. It simply provides a policy framework that others would then take up. And on the policy side, this would be, I'm talking about the state legislature, they would take up to create laws. And with regard to funding, that could either be a state funding source or it could be regional funding sources that we'll talk about more as we get into it. So, follow along with me here as we get into element one. Okay, so the compact, as I, as I sort of mentioned, is, consists of 10 elements. And the first element is what's called, what they're calling just-caused eviction, eviction policy. And this would create fault and no-fault evictions. It would require a noticing of tenants in a cure period. And landlords, under this proposal, would pay relocation assistance, except if it's, if the owner moves into the unit. So, the protections would start after 12 months of tenancy. So, if it's a, if you're renting for less than 12 months, this wouldn't apply to you as a tenant. But if you're there for longer than 12 months, then this would, this policy, if it was enacted into law, would apply to you. And it doesn't apply to owner-occupied properties. So, this typically would be like a, let's say you're an owner in a main unit and you have a junior accessory dwelling unit or you have a dwelling, accessory dwelling unit on your property. It wouldn't apply in those cases. I think the intent here is to go after like second properties, income properties, not necessarily properties where the owner resides on the property as their primary residence. necessarily properties where the owner resides on the property as their primary residence. Okay, element two is called a rent cap. And this would be proposed over the 15-year period. It'd have annual max increases of the Consumer Price Index plus 5%. It had, as a policy, it had provisions for pass-through of like capital expenses, if there's capital improvements to the property, banking of increases. And so this would be like if the property owner doesn't use the CPI plus 5, doesn't increase rents, or if the economy takes a downturn and the rents drop, you could bank them to a certain degree and kind of catch up when the economy improves, or if you want to increase rents later. This applies to the renter, not the unit. So I interpret this to mean that if there's multiple renters, it would apply to the individual renters as opposed to the unit as a whole. And ADUs on owner-occupied properties would be exempt from this rent cap requirement. And again, I think the intent here is to make this apply to like second property, income properties, not owner-occupied properties. Okay, rental, this is element three, rental assistance and legal counsel. The idea here is to provide emergency rent assistance of somewhere between $5,000 to $10,000, with a maximum of $5,000 to $10,000 per tenancy. And this would apply if your income is less than 80% of area median income, so applying to lower-income people. Provide legal counsel to tenants facing eviction. And if, again, if it's an owner-occupied property, this wouldn't apply. And the emergency rent assistance, as well as legal counsel, would require funding, of course. And so we'll get into more of that later. This would be in element nine, which talks about funding. So these first three elements are really the, you'd call them the protect, you know, to try to protect existing tenants. And as we get into these other elements, we're getting into the production side of things, trying to produce more housing. So element four is loosening second unit regulations. And there's been some recent law around second units to try to make it more ministerial in nature. This would further that. So ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, that's a separate unit on the property, so like a little cottage or something that's separate from the main house. A JADU is what they call a junior accessory dwelling unit. And that's like a second unit within the main house, so like a separately-entranced part of the main house that you could rent out. And ministerial approval, that just means that it would be approved essentially by right with no public hearing process or anything like that. There would be no public review process for it. And this would encourage owner occupancy on property. So the idea there is that it's not like a vacation rental. If you do create an ADU or JADU through this process, they're trying to encourage, there's nothing really strong in there, but they try, the narrative of it is trying to encourage owner occupancy on these. It would limit impact fee assessments. So impact fees are the, as you all know, are the things that we charge to try to offset the impact of additional residents. So if you have to upsize water mains or sewer mains, or put new traffic signals in because there's new people living in the city, impact fees are the mechanism that cities in California use to try to pay the proportional share of the impacts to the new residents. This would essentially limit, or it would eliminate any impact fees for under 500 square feet, and then have some limitations above that. It would allow multiple ADUs on multifamily properties. It would create a small homes building code, which currently, small homes are one of these things that are kind of in the gray area in the building code, because they're kind of trailers, but they're kind of not, and they don't really fall neatly into any part of the building code. So this would, the call is to create a building code for small homes. And if you do, if you do some of these things, you're going to require some level of monitoring, and that requires resources. So that would either be staff time and/or funding at some level to monitor these units. Okay, element five, this is the most popular one. So minimum zoning near transit. This is something that was at the state legislature last year. Senator Weiner had a bill that was working through the process. It was Assembly Bill, or, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 827. It ultimately didn't make it to the governor's desk, but it's reincarnated as SB 50 for this legislative cycle. The idea here is that it would reset zoning near transit. And transit is grouped into two buckets, I'd call it. One is high-quality bus service areas, and these are bus stops where you have minimum headways. Headways are the number of times of the bus stops there during peak periods and during weekends. So if you have buses coming on a certain interval, a certain time interval, then it would qualify as a high-quality bus service. Currently, in Cattati, under Sonoma County Transit and Golden Gate Transit, we don't have anything that would fall strictly in that current definition. But, I mean, that's just something you could re-change the routing, and then you'd be in it. So it'd be pretty easy to change that if there was additional funding for transit or transit routes changed. But as it stands now, currently, we don't have those type of corridors. We also, the other bucket of, the other bucket of minimum zoning near transit is rail and ferry stops. Obviously, we don't have ferry here, at least not for maybe 100 years or so, maybe we loved ferry then, but not at the moment. So right now, we have SMART, and under this proposal, under the CASA proposal, it would create, and you see in the staff report, an image of our transit station and a quarter-mile radius circle. So within that area, it would remove, or it would dramatically heighten the heights allowed to five or five-story buildings, or with density bonuses, seven-story buildings within that area. If, getting back to the high-quality bus stops, if we did have a high-quality bus stop within a half a mile, it would allow 36 feet, which is essentially a three-story building. And an odd quirk is that SB 50, which is the one that's in the legislature right now, has them flip-flopped. So it's half a mile within a, like a transit, like a train station, and a quarter mile near high-quality bus stops, for some reason. Anyway. Suffice it to say that there's, that these proposals to try to densify near transit are not only in CASA, but also at the state legislature. And they've definitely got a lot of attention, particularly when you're outside of the urban areas, and trying to build some of these buildings, which are completely unlike anything near them. It would definitely be dramatically different than what we have right now in these suburban areas. And finally, I'll just say that there's this housing overlay on what I'll just have in quotes here, is large, low-density commercial sites. It's undefined what that is, but if there's low-density commercial sites, it would convert them with a housing overlay to allow housing to be constructed on them. And the main challenge there is, of course, one of just basically flipping your zoning on you without any local input, but also, commercial is often the engine of economic development to provide other services to the residents. And if you flip it to housing, then that goes the other direction. It creates additional burden. Yes, go ahead.
So the problem with this one is really the first bullet, right? Is the override local zoning, because these are meant to happen if this legislature gets passed by right, which means we get no say. Correct?
Yeah, so my understanding of the legislation is that it doesn't matter what it's zoned, you'd be allowed to build that. And we'll get into some other elements that get to other parts of that.
And I would say that is the general theme of the CASA compact, is that all local control is gone, essentially. I mean, that's where this is pushing, so that's where I think we need to look at it very carefully.
Near transit zones, for sure. Okay, so element six, reform the housing, what they call reform the housing approval process. It would lock in fees at the application completeness. So what that means in layman's terms is that when people submit development applications to the city, they go through an internal review process to make sure that the project has all the studies and other elements sufficiently detailed so that we can start the environmental review process, we can start the SEQA process. And when it has the studies and other sufficient detail to be able to describe the project and disclose it in SEQA, then it is deemed a complete application. And so that would lock in the fees at the very front, as opposed to how it is now, where it's at the end of the process, especially if these things drag on for years. Fees can be dramatically, I mean, we've, Cassin Ranch is, you know, a good example. We have those, and many cities do. During the recession, the housing slowed down and stopped, and then, you know, they pick them back up a decade later, and fees can be dramatically different at that point in time, that don't reflect the reality of where we're at now. So that would change that quite a bit. It requires rules, codes, and standards, online and in print, which is, I mean, that is what it is. That's not anything horrible, I don't think. But it limits the number of public hearings, what they call de novo hearings, to three, no more than three hearings. It changes the impact fee setting processes, trying to limit impact fee development, essentially. Restricts downzoning and moratoria. And so downzoning is basically moving away from densification. So upzoning is densifying areas, downzoning is making them less dense. And they're trying to prohibit cities from downzoning and making it less dense. Moratoria is like building restrictions, building stops, unless there's a health and safety problem that requires a moratoria, then they would not allow it. I think in some cases, some cities have issued moratoria for building that didn't have to do with health and safety things, or other issues, and maybe that's what that's trying to get to. It adds reporting requirements on the cities. Basically, it's basically like a confessional, you know, to the state when you do something that increases the cost of housing. Element seven is expedited approvals and incentives for certain types of projects. So for certain projects, and it's listed in the CASA compact, seeking SEQA exemptions, and trying to require approval within one year with limited public hearings, so expediting. This is housing I'm talking about, of course, right, and other types of development. And creating financial incentives, including, you know, the zoning override and reducing local parking requirements, so they don't have to find as much parking for these projects. And providing tax breaks, capping impact fees, and allowing higher density bonuses. So basically, trying to provide financial incentives to the home builders to produce more housing. And using public land for housing, so it would basically require public agencies to list all their surplus properties or underutilized, whatever, underutilized land that they do currently possess. And that would be reported to the state. And so you'd have a blanket zone on all such properties for housing regardless of zoning. So in other words, like if you had, for example, industrially-zoned property that the city owned, or the city owns, that that could be developed for housing. Which oftentimes isn't really compatible for housing, but I only can speculate that maybe some city somewhere was trying to rezone property to not have it developed. I don't know. And then, element nine, so all of, a lot of the monitoring, a lot of the incentives, all this stuff has to, and the last element, which I'll talk about in a second, which is a new regional housing enterprise, requires funding to operate. And so element nine is funding and financing of up to $1.5 billion per year. This is local, or when I say local, I mean regional funding in the nine county Bay Area. Another $1 billion per year is stated to come from state or federal sources. So that would be $2.5 billion per year to run these programs. In the packet, there's a series of different types of, they call it kind of like a, like a slate of potentially different fees and taxes that could be enacted. And they show relative amounts of money that could be raised with each one of them. And there's up to eight of them that are shown in the packet. And I will just say, in case anyone's following along, it's packet page 180. And these are just a variety, kind of a smorgasbord of different potential tax types, including sales taxes, taxes on vacant homes, commercial, taxes on commercial development as linkage fees, gross receipts for businesses, jobs-based taxes, property-based taxes, and so forth. So of course, any of these would, or most of them would have to be enacted by the voters, but they are, those are various proposals to fund this. Looking at, now looking at Cattati, and I'm not talking about municipal operations, I'm saying Cattati as a whole. An estimate, if these taxes, our share of the $1.5 billion were enacted, through some combination of these taxes, it would be about $2.3 million per year from Cattati. That's Cattati City plus Cattati residents, Cattati businesses, and so forth, right? And they would go into this formula that they're calling 75% return to source, 25% regional. So return to source means return to the county of origin, not the city of origin. So they'd come into Sonoma County, and they'd be distributed on some basis that we don't know about yet. 25% would be retained regionally for regional programs, and also to implement element 10, which is creating a regional housing entity. And so as listed, they would supposedly be a non-regulatory, non-enforcement body. And they would have a new board structure comprised of the, many of the same people that created the CASA compact, or same agencies, same entities. And they would basically implement the CASA compact, they would report on progress, they'd manage legal assistance, this is legal assistance to renters. And if you flip the packet page 182, there's a little chart of what the regional housing enterprise roles would be, and how it would fit into MTC ABAG. So ABAG already sets the regional housing numbers, the RENA numbers. On a state level, there's HCD, which we send our housing, from our general planner Housing Element to, and we report our housing production numbers to them. So this would create another housing entity on a regional level. And they would do, as you can see from packet page 182, they would do their regional, the revenue administration of debt issuance for programming. They could do land leasing and disposition. They would provide technical assistance to local entities, and they would do monitoring and reporting. As I mentioned, supposedly, the board would be independent with the representation that we saw for the CASA group. And they would use MTC ABAG staff with potentially other consultants and things for specialized Finally, there's these other things that are called calls for action. And these are calls to the state legislature mostly, to reestablish some form of redevelopment, lower the voter threshold for housing measures akin to what school districts have. So school districts have a 55% voting threshold for normally- So, school districts have a 55% voting threshold for, normally special districts require two-thirds, and, but schools, because of changes in state law, are allowed to pass measures of 55%. And so that's what this would, that's what this call for action is, trying to lower that threshold to 55% for housing measures. Reform online sales tax to point of sale, in other words, if you buy something online, the sales tax would then come back to the city that it originated in, as opposed to right now what happens for online sales, is they go into a county pool, and then the county pool gets distributed out on a sales tax percentage basis. And reforming Prop 13 to provide more to cities that create housing, provide funding for formerly homeless people to get them off the streets, grow and stabilize the construction labor workforce. And finally, I will just point out, this kind of turned into a long staff report, but some other things that are happening, I mentioned a little bit about what's happening at the state. There is in the packet, a, there is a letter, or I'm sorry, a report from MTC, and this is on, I'll find it for you in a second, it's on packet page, starting on packet page 150, but the table that you'd be interested in starts at packet page 153. It lists each one of the CASA Compact elements with the state legislation that's currently pending at the state to implement it, and these elements, not necessarily verbatim, but in some form. And this is as of early February, so that's where we are from a state legislative standpoint. The governor also released his draft state budget, which is highlighted in the staff report, but it's also, one element of it is very housing-centric. He's very, he's going to be pushing very hard on housing. So, the expectation is that probably anything that makes it to his desk would be viewed favorably by the governor. And then, finally, just the item tonight is really to talk about the CASA Compact and get some initial feedback, at least, for the mayor and myself to draft a letter, a position letter from the city, that, at least right now, I'm envisioning that we'd probably come back, we'd likely come back, given the complex nature of this, we'd likely come back to council with that letter before we actually issue it. And as you all know, the mayors and council members and the city selection committee, those appointments for A-BAG and MTC got extended, so that extension goes, applications are due on March 1st, so I'm expecting in that first council meeting in March, probably March 12th, we might take that back up as well to talk about that. So, that's not the discussion tonight, those appointments are not the discussion tonight, we'll get to that after the applications are received, but that is, I was trying to be quick, but it wasn't so quick, the overview of a pretty, pretty kind of complex proposal that's quickly moved from the regional into a state legislative process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Damian. I know in sitting with Damian over the last week or so, there was a lot of information to go through, and it is very, I mean, the onion is just being peeled. I mean, we have a number of layers to go, and we felt it was very important to bring this, obviously, you know, back to our council, hopefully more councils will take a look at this, you know, in the very near future, because there'll be some more decisions made come the April mayors and council members meeting as well. So, with that, I'm going to start to see if council has any questions for staff, and we can hold our comments until after public comment, so I'll start with Councilmember Landman.
Probably good to withhold comments just a little bit longer.
I'm trying.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. So, two quick, hopefully quick questions for staff. So, looking at Element Seven, expedited approvals and financial incentives for select housing. So, for example, in the area surrounding Santero, potentially a quarter-mile radius, which actually extends quite a bit beyond that neighborhood and to quite a few other areas, we could wind up with five-story buildings by right in an area with the PDA, that's typically three, that you might be able to stretch to four, and more likely seven stories with density bonuses. So, basically, that could all be that, along with all these other things to some combination of, a 15-year property tax abatement, which starves communities, a cap on impact fees, same thing, a 35% density bonus, this is another stacking density bonus, and my favorite, or two of my favorites here, parking reduced to 50% of local requirement with no local control over that.
That's my reading of it, yes.
So, would it be fair to say they're giving us something awful and trying to make it better by giving us even more worse things? I mean, I don't get, and I wanted to ask, what does relief from strict liability standards mean? That kind of makes a few hairs stand up in the back of my head, and I'm not an engineer.
You know, I think it has to do with when developers were building townhomes many years ago, there was a lot of litigation that came out of that, and so they moved away from the townhome development style. I believe that's what that's about, to try to limit liability for home builders.
So there were some subsequent consumer protections, it sounds like, that were put in place due to industry problems, and we're looking to remove those potentially? Would that be another way of explaining what this might suggest?
It's, I mean, it's hard to say exactly what they're proposing there, but I think the intent seems clear enough that they're trying to limit the liability of the builders.
This is a wish list for developers and bankers, certainly, but it isn't much of a wish list for people living in these communities. Last question. The previous part, Element Five, it talks about large commercial parcels, this is the last paragraph in that page, within the above transit zones could be rezoned or would be, no control, rezoned to allow housing. What happened to the mantra that everybody bought into of priority development areas with a mix of housing, jobs, and transportation, because it made sense to everybody to have some degree of increased densification there, because people could live there, some of them could possibly work there, they might not have to drive quite so much, although you're still going to need parking spaces. How did this get tossed out the window in just 16 days in December?
Well, I can't probably claim to answer that question, but I would just say that, I mean, it seems apparent when you look through both Element Five and Seven that you mentioned earlier, that they're trying to latch on to transit-rich, what they're calling transit-rich areas, where they are presuming that there's other transportation options other than cars, and densifying it and trying to push as much housing into those areas as possible.
I think the logical move towards increasing density that matches community size and standards, and PDAs as being stretched into something more akin to vertical sprawl, but that's more of a comment, so I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman, do you have any questions for staff on the report?
I just had one quick question for, I seem to remember when we were talking about development a lot near the train station, an issue was raised about the Federal Railroad having some sort of incentive for higher density, and, because I remember the developers had brought that to the table, I don't remember the final outcome of whether we thought the federal rules would apply versus our local zoning. I seem to remember the developers were saying, no, really, we could build it bigger if we wanted to because of the federal rules. So, that's not a fair question, because it's not covered by the CASA Compact, but that's just, I think, for maybe our future meeting, if that can be in your bonnet, because I don't remember, I remember the beginning of the conversation, and there was a lot of back and forth between the city of Cattati and the specific developers saying, we think the city's ordinances would control. So anyway, I was just curious if that was already a layer that we needed to consider with development near the rail station.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is, so there's a couple of pre-existing things. One was, one was the climate initiatives, where they are, from a development standpoint, they try to encourage transit-oriented development, and I think there's some fees from the Climate Fund that are available, some revenue that you can use potentially to incentivize development there. But also, there was, I think it was called Sustainable Communities, it wasn't a city ordinance, it wasn't even a state ordinance or state regulation, it was sort of a policy goal to densify around transit, but it wasn't, it didn't have a binding effect on us, even though that was the discussion.
Okay.
The city rule still preempted that.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying.
That's it for questions? Councilmember Harvey?
So, my questions are mostly related to the funding sources, because this is a little scary. That one that you did isn't as scary as the one that actually is in the MTC thing that kind of breaks it down by who's paying, that one's a little bit more scary. So, it's basically property owners, developers, employers, local governments, and taxpayers. So, some of these, I'm not sure whether they can just impose these, and some of them, I think, have to be voted upon. So, on property owners, there's two suggested, one a vacant home tax, and the second one is a regional parcel tax of $48 per year for each property owner. Do those both have to be voted on by voters, or can they be imposed?
The two taxes under property owners would have to be voted on.
They would, okay.
Yeah, but, and just recall too, that if they were to, I mean, it would have to be voted on, but if they also introduced legislation to lower the voter threshold, that could be, that could come into play as well.
Okay. And then they have, for the developers, they have variable commercial linkage fees on new construction and flat commercial linkage fees. I'm supposing that that's based upon commercial buildings being built, that they pay a share to contribute towards housing, is that kind of what that, I mean, what they talked about even in the news this week, they had a big picture of, down in Cupertino, the Big Apple Building, the spaceship, and that spaceship is going to have 10,000 new jobs, and basically they have provided zero housing for those 10,000 new jobs. So, they'll have people coming, but, you know, God knows, you know, where they're going to live to come to those jobs. So, I'm assuming that just behind this was to get, you know, some funding from developers that are building commercial to contribute?
Correct, yeah. So, the linkage fee, we, the city and many cities already have linkage fees, but ours are on the order of like $2 to $3 per square foot, so this is quite a bit larger than that.
Okay.
And that's exactly right, so the intent of it is that when you have new commercial development that brings new jobs, that the link, has a linkage back to housing, so you generate some revenue for housing construction. And this is a fee, so, I mean, currently, this is something the city would impose, but presumably through some sort of regional construct, the region could impose it on everyone.
Okay. And would those have to be voted upon, or are those just?
Yeah, just maybe a protest vote? I don't think so. It's not a tax, no. It wouldn't be on a ballot.
Okay. And then the next column goes on to employers, and it talks about a tax on gross receipts, so any business that has to pay a .1 to .75 tax, and on a $40 to $120 per job head tax. Again, are those, would those have to be voted upon, or?
Yeah, I think it should have to be voted on.
Okay. Okay. Because that's what's, you know, kind of unclear on some of this is, these numbers are big, and what, it's a big deal if things have to be voted upon, some mix of them may or may not, you know, what if only a quarter of them, you know, pass?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, generally, you have property owners, in terms of categories, the property owners, the employers, and the taxpayers would all have to vote on it.
Okay.
Local governments would just get handed it.
So, that was my next question.
Yeah.
And for us, it talks about a 25% redevelopment set aside, which, on property tax, which, based upon our previous budget amount of, basically, I'll just round up like a million and a half, that would give us a hit of about $400,000, right, off the top, right? That would have to get set aside in this fund that's going to go up somewhere, and as you said, as I understand it, will come back to the county, but the chances of us ever seeing one penny of that are not so good.
But Apple needs it.
It's, yeah, I mean, of course, it's anyone's guess as to whether we'd ever see it again, but the, it appears to be that what they're looking at is the tax increment.
Well, that's the second, that's the second part, right? A 20% revenue sharing contribution on future property tax growth? That's an additional 20% on that tax growth. So not only are they going to hit you on your property taxes and take it away from us, then they want another hit of 20% with this increment of future tax growth. So it's kind of a double whammy there.
Yeah, well, the redevelopment revenue set aside isn't really a, right now, in most successor agencies, we're just getting, we're just basically paying old bond debt and things like that.
Well, right, but I think this is meant to be new, right? This new thing will be created, and that's how much of our property tax is going to be taken to create this new thing.
Yeah, it would definitely be new. It appeared, though, that it looked like, and I can try to get more detail on this before we come back with it, but it appeared to be more based on revenue growth as opposed to, unless they're able to increase the redevelopment revenue that we currently receive and take that, because right now, the rest of it goes to schools in the county, right? So unless they redirect that, and maybe that's what they mean.
Well, and it says, including a portion for schools in special districts, so it may very well be that it's.
Redirecting that, potentially, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways.
So, it's a little bit unclear on that, but.
Yeah, and those would get handed down to us, not voted upon. And then lastly, we have the taxpayers, and they're proposing, and this is actually the largest number there, they're proposing a quarter cent sales tax, which they're saying is going to bring in $400 million, and that would have to get voted upon. And as it stands right now, that's interesting, because that wouldn't be general either, it would be specific, so would that be a two-thirds?
Yes.
Because it's special to this?
Right, so that's why one of those calls for action is to drop it to 55%, but otherwise...
For special ones that are housing?
For housing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty then, so those were kind of my questions on the funding of this lovely item.
Good, I'm actually feeling really good about this. So, Councilmember Moore, do you have any questions?
No, in light of the questions, well, I do have one question, but in light of the other questions that have been addressed. Did you, have we heard any response from A-BAG/MTC on the fallout from this initial introduction and the changing of the elected officials as representatives?
I haven't heard a lot, although I do, and maybe some of you might have more information, but I know another part, at least in some other parts of the Bay Area, I've heard at least one or two other people.
Same with you.
Having problems, yeah.
Yeah. And so they haven't made an official statement that, oh, or anything? No, not that we've heard.
No, not that I'm aware of. I think, I think at this point, they're taking the roadshow on the road, as you do with roadshows, and like I had mentioned, the state legislature has been following this pretty closely, and so a lot of this is already at the legislative level. So I think, yeah, so I think, it's, I think they're more just trying to keep a lid on it within the region, while the state legislature does what they do. And that's probably where, you know, after we get through this initial kind of... And, and that's probably where, you know, after we get through this initial kind of educational, um, period that we're in right now, it's, it's probably gonna quickly shift to what's going on at the state, and really pushing hard on the things that would be a problem for local jurisdictions.
Yeah, and when you, when you go from a crisis, and then you try to solve the crisis, it's usually pretty extreme, and that disappears at this point.
Yeah. Councilmember Lammon, another statement?
Yeah, when you talk about re-education, or, I, I feel like Winston Smith a little bit here, I think, the Ministry of Truth. Going back to the question you asked about reactions from ABAG, there's one piece in our packet that I found somewhat illuminating, and it's worth pointing out right now, since you brought it up. And it, on our packet page, at least, it's one-fifty. This is a memorandum to the Joint MTC Legislative Committee and the ABAG Legislative Committee. It's from the Executive Director, Steve Heminger. And it says, "Local Government Outreach" in the first paragraph, and it talks about some of the feedback that they've got from cities. It mentions nothing about torches or pitchforks, but it goes into, oh, what, about ten or so, actually really good points, the first four of which really cover a lot of the broad strokes, but they're all very valid points. So, with that feedback, what they're talking about here towards the last paragraph in that page, and the first paragraph on the very next page, one-fifty-one, they talk about convening an ad hoc committee of local elected officials representing the region's geographic diversity, including representatives of small, medium, and large cities who are currently not serving on MTC or ABAG, who will be briefed and provide input regarding CASA-related legislation that could meet monthly. Sounds great, that's a wonderful little sop, except for if you look right down at the legislative update, after all of this, on February twenty-second, uh, excuse me, not February twenty-second, after all of this, though, just before February first, I'm gonna read right from this next-to-last paragraph. At the time this memo was finalized, the Bay Area Caucus had just held a retreat during which the CASA compact was presented and discussed. MTC Chairman McKenzie and ABAG President Rabid were invited to speak along with three CASA chairs. It goes on to say they discussed essentially the importance of seeking to move the entire package forward. There's your answer right there. There is no interest from those representatives or this group, from my personal reading of this, in making any changes or having any concern about what's going on here. And I have some more comments on that, but I think I'll wait till after public comment. But that does answer a few questions about what their reaction is and what it likely will look like.
Yeah, and like, um, like was just mentioned, I will, I neglected to say this, but the intent of, and when you watch the steering committee meeting, um, from December when this was approved, the intent was, from everyone pretty much at the table, that this whole thing goes forward as an entire packet, that it's not a, not a pick-and-chews kind of thing, it's a comprehensive thing. That would all move forward together.
Yeah, the, to me, too, the, the simple fact that there's nothing scalable for specific communities in here makes absolutely no sense. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not, what, yes?
I have to ask one more quick question, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
So, it was mentioned that ABAG did the, or MTC did the interesting scheduling of coming up with the compact, doing it to the dead of night in, in December, putting it out to the legislature, but now we're coming around to get our opinions. And yet, if they're saying right there, there's absolutely no interest in reviewing it, it has to go as a compact, why are they coming to just talk to us?
Because we don't understand.
It's a rhetorical question. It's a rhetorical question, we don't need to...
No, I guess it is, because this, this really, let me just be very discreet and say it's rather amazing.
There, there were some of the steering committee members at that meeting in December that did voice, um, a concern about the lack of outreach on it as they were approving it, um, probably for good reason.
Yeah, and just before I open it for public comment, so, I, I was looking also on the packet page one-five-two, and when you look at the, all of those meetings all over the Bay Area, from December twelve, I think, that must be twenty-eighteen is what it says, all the way through March seven, so that makes no sense, so that must have been twenty-seventeen. But anyway, regardless, or they put them in alphabetically?
Those are future meetings. They're talking about January of this year, and February of this year.
All right, I'm gonna hold off on that last comment. With that, we will open this up for public comment, uh, before we bring this back to council. So, I have no speaker cards, Mr. Berge, feel free. This is gonna be good, I can tell.
Welcome to the Soviet state of California. Here we are, folks, here we are, boys and girls. Our little dream come true is coming into fruition. Everything kind of comes full circle, doesn't it? Um, that was a good report, Damian, I don't, you know, I don't, I can't speak to the accuracy of it, but I do appreciate, uh, your effort there to educate us. The CASA roadshow, the CASA roadshow. I keep thinking back to Katati's commitment to small-town charm. I have a lot of thoughts that come to mind witnessing this come before us. Uh, I see a lot less housing with the idea of rent caps, which is rent control, more other controls that Damian alluded to in this, in this, uh, policy. A lot of, uh, policing by unelected bureaucrats and administrators, not elected officials. That means local officials will be able to pass the buck, it looks like, in a lot of ways, by telling the electorate, "Look, it's out of our control, you know, we're doing the best we can here, but it's a state, it's a state." So, it's a way to kind of pass the buck to the state. Um, they're gonna wash your tax money, they're gonna wash our tax money for a twenty-five percent fee. That's a kind of a general overview of what I'd take here. It's about more taxes, more taxes, more taxes, so everybody, everybody here should be happy. We love taxes here in Katati. Uh, more government, more government, and yes, Ms. Harvey, Ms. Harvey, it's, it's scary. Very scary. It's almost like your wish come true. And then Reforming Prop thirteen. How's that been going for us for the last forty years? Reforming Prop thirteen, oh boy, oh joy. Well, we're gonna need a lot more housing with the governor, governor wanting to take troops off our southern border. California is technically a sanctuary state, so this is what it looks like, folks. This is what sanctuary states look like in its fruition. This is what it comes to. You wanna ease the housing crisis, you wanna, and you gotta just keep raising taxes, keep raising fees. More people will leave, the rich will stay. You know, it's a, it's a real conundrum we've gotten ourselves into. I appreciate your independent thinking on this, we've got a long ways to go. The roadshow, it's gonna be very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Mr. Hancock?
Yes, good evening, Council Neil Hancock. Um, you know, twenty years ago, there was a local conference here that said, um, better, not bigger. And one of the premises of it was looking at how the communities get deepened, and, um, looking at this page hundred-and-fifty, the memorandum, um, from the local concerns, I, I would certainly hope that the issue of, um, a framework for jobs, or a, a band of job growths can be phrased too much. We really appreciate some job growth, but it tends to be in the higher capacity at the moment, the higher earning capacity, and it tends to be coming from certain areas, so, so being able to feed back on how is that, um, what, what would be a band of, of good, for the economy, good job growth, but not too much? So, um, I mean, it's phrased here on that concern about job growth. Um, and I think that's, uh, the, the big area, that California's been extremely successful, so has some of the East Coast, and, um, unfortunately, it seems some of the rest of the country don't really want to adopt these policies, so, um, we have a problem. And I think part of that's limiting the number of jobs that come into a good bundling. Portland did it, um, this was twenty years ago. I think even Menlo Park has limited the amount of office space, which is really jobs that can create, be, be created. So, I, you know, in the feedback, if there is, you know, a discussion about feedback, it would be, how can the region have a framework for what is a, a healthy job growth? Not overheating, not, but if it is overheating, where do some of those costs, where do some of the, the costs of coping with the overheating fall? So, anyway, I just, a sort of a two cents in there about, um, this goes back to a, a conference that was put on twenty years ago about just what happens when your local economy overheats, you know, how do you, how do we broaden the economy rather than make it bigger? Just how do we make it better and stuff? And I think this comes into it better for everybody, really. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Alderman?
Um, I strongly urge you to not, um, support the CASA compact, because, um, we, for one thing, here in Katati, we're pretty much built out on the east side. Um, every project, every piece of land is spoken for, for development. The west side of the, is protected in the federal critical habitat, um, that's gonna be an issue with the, it being a state mandated. And also, we, there's already laws about, in legal ways and things like that, to address the affordable housing crisis. And, um, having this big compact that would hardly affect, it might dry, drain from Katati rather than help Katati, is, uh, is not, we, we need, we need to be individuals, um, we need to have control. We're a college town, um, we're, um, we're, we pride ourselves on our uniqueness and everything, and this having to adhere to housing goals does, it just won't work. And, um, we, we just don't have the, the population to make a difference on this, too. Um, we, yeah, if it's Santa Rosa, it's a big deal, but it might help them, but it's gonna, um, deter from us, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Loriann?
I just wanna say that it's unfortunate that the, it's being presented as a pact that's like one-size-fits-all, because there's so much differentiation in the whole Bay Area. But I just wanna say that I think some of it's really good. I think that the idea of trying to house more people, the idea of going for density, the, making it easier to do additional housing units, um, even some height near transit, I mean, I think there's a lot of good that they're trying to accomplish. And, um, I'm not saying it's all good for Katati and whatever, but I just kind of wanna say that some people put a lot of effort into this, and they're trying to do a good thing, they're trying to increase housing, and, um, so I wanna applaud them for doing that. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on public comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and a second little tap for taking a six-minute bio break. Thank you.
Closing of the public comment, and now we need to come back and give some direction. And, um, I've been picking up vibes from my colleagues here.
Hi.
And the public. And, uh, I don't know, my, my, my quick summary, but we'll have a discussion, is, um, let's see, we, we could be losing local control, creating buildings up to five or seven stories, build on currently non-developed parcels, tax the cities, businesses, and residents, form a new body of government.
That's it?
That's not really a motion, I just kind of wanted to...
You forgot removing parking and taking away secret protections, too.
And, and let's just throw that in.
Those go hand in hand.
I guess altogether, we, we're creating dystopia, which is really nice. I, I don't disagree with Loriann Barber, who's now gone. I don't disagree with her in that, you know what, this compact has, at least conceptually, there's some really good stuff in there. I mean, there clearly is. But I think, you know, for me, and we'll have this discussion, it does fall back on, you know, how can they do this, and, you know, I keep hearing the phrase one-size-fits-all, how can they just do that and impose that? Well, and, and that's the direction that it's going to, so, um, let's go this end and start with Councilmember Moore, and see if you have any additional comments, or, uh, I, I, you know, if you'd like to give some kind of direction, you're more than welcome to, as we go down the line here.
No, I, I, my thought on that is, uh, just what you just said, one-size does not fit all. And, and in this particular case, I think there's some wonderful elements in there. Uh, I think even some of it addresses what, one of my concerns was in, in the budget, mid-year review, when we talked about a thirty-five percent increase in rents. I mean, this would, you know, address some of those issues, but, um, it, it's a little, um, it's a little much to, to, you know, put a little brevity on there.
Yep, yep, thank you, appreciate that. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, we, um...
Please don't hold your head.
Yeah, this hurts my head. Um, we have, for years and years, been trying to defend our small-town character, and there are elements in here that would create, you know, for lack of a better term, monstrosities. I mean, I can only imagine a seven-story building, how it might stick out like a sore thumb. That, there's nothing small-town character about that. And, um, you, you talk about, you know, by the train station, what's to say that they won't change some of the bus routes, and all of a sudden, all of our northern area, our northern gateway area over there, all of a sudden, they have better bus service, and now it falls into those, and with the density bonuses and everything, those have seven-story. It just doesn't fit our size. One-size doesn't fit all, to coin your term. Um, so, that, that is what bothers me the most about this, is that it doesn't fit within our community, the goals for our community. I don't mind us having to do affordable housing, I don't mind a lot of the elements in, in here, um, but this is like open game for developers to really just run free and build whatever they want here. And, and believe me, we have seen some developers try and push that envelope before, and they will jump all over some of these freebies, if you will. And quite frankly, you know, you, uh, it was mentioned earlier about having people here at our meetings. You know, some of the meetings that we've had, the most people at are housing projects where the neighbors have issue with that. We would have a lot of people here being very upset about some of these things being built right next to them with no say.
Yeah.
You know, it's sort of like, yeah, come on down and tell us you don't like it, and it's just like, oh, too bad. Uh, that doesn't feel good, I'm sorry. It just, you know, doesn't, it just doesn't send the, the right message, uh, the right message for me. So, I, I just, I, I'm very disturbed that this was going on and that it was passed, and you pointed out the letter, that basically it's a compact and, and it's there, but by signing the compact and sending it up to the state, it implies that we all agree with it. And that's the implication of that, is that, oh, well, it's signed by all these people, and people were involved, and, you know, oh, well, we'll outreach later, but it implies to the legislature at the state that we all agree and think that this is a good idea. And, and I think that that was what was lacking. This was going on for, what, eighteen months? You know, when that was being developed, that's when the outreach should have happened. These are the elements that we're, that we're considering, you know, in here. We would have had, been able maybe to put some of those not one-size-fits-all. We are not San Jose. You know, in case anybody hadn't looked lately, we're not, so, you know, having that. And, and so it is disturbing, especially some of the people up in the, in the legislature... And so it is disturbing, especially some of the people up in the, in the legislate area up there, they come from these big cities, they don't know anything but those big cities. And so it, it seems natural to them to do these kind of things because they're trying to solve the San Francisco problem. Well, that's not what we are, and there are plenty of smaller cities that, you know, just can't do that. So, anyways.
Don't, don't give up hope, because I have an idea later on about the state legislature.
Oh, good.
So don't give up any hope yet.
All right, I won't give up.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
All right, okay. Let's turn on the mic, first thing. So, I, I hate when people talk and they're repeating everybody else's points, but I do appreciate the point, that there is a housing crisis, that is bottom line, we, we have an issue right now. I think one of the problems when you get a large group of people together and you're trying to make something that can be universally applied, it, it's never going to be a very good fit for everybody. And I also, one of the things that I would anticipate if something like this did go forward and became sort of the model for the city dictating how all of the cities are going to develop, I can also pretty much look into my crystal ball and see that whether a city is impacted by how something happens is also not going to be equivalent with how much money comes back into that city. So whether we have, population-wise, a higher percentage impact based on any of the changes that are made, I can guarantee you it's not going to be the same breakdown for how much money Cattati's going to be given back to adjust for that. I do think that there were a lot of good motivations behind this. I think unfortunately, it's sort of a best intentions sort of analogy to where does that road lead? But it, it is true, there, there, I think a lot of this would have been a good way to recommend how each city could focus itself and decide how to do things, but I think the problem is handing it over to the state and then putting the money all in a pool, the smaller cities are going to get left out of that equation. So, I concur, there's a lot of agreement as far as how we feel as a small town, and I mean, I've always heard that whenever we go knocking on doors and talking to people, or even the note I got from somebody who lived here years ago and came back and said, I love that it's still a small town, this is fantastic. That really is something that we want to maintain, and this is not going to be a good way to do it. Also just wanted to make the point, too, it looked like there were a lot of cooks in the kitchen, so I don't think that any one person went rogue. There was the technical committee, there was the steering committee, there were a lot of people looking at this, and then bodies like this saying, okay, John, sign off, you know, so it wasn't like one person said, oh, I'm going to take over and I'm going to run this. So, I know there's been a lot of negative feelings, but I think it sort of has to be looked at as a whole, that this is not a good plan and it's not really going to work for a town of our size. And that is about it for my comments this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Landman?
Where to begin? The outrage about this is that this horse is out of the gate. We can sit here and talk about how we don't like it, we can represent our community and try and fight it, but the truth of the matter, this has been very purposely set up as strongly as possible to prevent any of us from having any effective means of actually doing that. Take a look at that timeline. December 3rd to December 19th, 16 days, barely two weeks, while government and most people everywhere in this county are taking Christmas off, as people always do. Perfect time to do something like, something that's been essentially like a small fire skunking around, doing nothing for two years. All of a sudden, it turns into this blaze and gets done that quick. That's not a mistake, that's not a coincidence. And Supervisor Rabbit, Jake McKenzie, and Julie Combs were all on the steering committee, every single one of them. The same steering committee that says, all these things have to go forward, although now they're talking about coming out to talk to us about it, even though it's already done and out to the legislature. So make no mistake, I want to be as clear as I can, this is essentially a coup. This is a power grab by MTC because of the monies they control. They absorbed A-Bag a couple of years ago, and now we see the result of this, they're in position to do this. You know, this is a San Francisco-Silicon Valley-sized response to what is actually a San Francisco-Silicon Valley problem. It doesn't fit, like many of us have said, everybody in this room practically has said, it doesn't fit in Sonoma County, certainly not in any city in this county, and even questionably if it would work in Santa Rosa. I mean, if you rounded up a bunch of builders, construction usings, unions, housing advocates, and then, of course, had Google, Facebook, and Genentech steering it, this would be the result you would get. But it's not the result that communities, in a community like ours, would want. And the frustration is, we have been open to the concerns of densification, we have been doing our best. Our city, Smollett, has two priority development areas, both in the downtown and by the smart station, where we have agreed for years that we see higher densities. And we have set those densities out, people have bought property based in the trust of those specific plans, and we even have gone so far as to slightly alter those a little bit to try and again, help with housing. But this would come in and essentially double those buildings. We're not talking one seven-story monstrosity, we're talking potentially lots of them. I mean, we've done our work, you know, we recently were asked after the fires for an inventory of what housing we might potentially have in the books coming forward the next year or two. And a real back-of-the-napkin calculation said, we had about 13% maybe? This is a small city that's surrounded in all sizes and only has infill, and yet we have that much housing coming up, assuming developers can get their funding together, get through the process, which we try to make easier. As you saw earlier today, we're reducing some of the meetings and some of the processes they have to go through. I mean, we've agreed to those tendencies, and in almost every neighborhood we've built, we have a good mix of affordable housing. We make whole neighborhoods with homes for people of all income means. But you know, to pull, what, 2.3 million out of our local economy to help Silicon Valley, Apple, I like Apple, but still, I don't think they need our money. And to override our local community values on keeping this a small city, and to force Cattati to look like some shrunken version of San Jose, I mean, that's ridiculous. And I am shocked that our local supervisor, David Rabbit, is pushing this as hard as possible, saying we all have to share the pain. Petaluma and Cattati need to wind up looking like San Jose because we have to share their pain when we have nothing in common. This is not our problem, and it's not pain that our citizens should have to bear. So bottom line, obviously, what's the saying about dear sir, strong letter to follow? A letter has to follow. I think page 150 is a great place to start because it outlines very clearly the key city responses. The first four certainly cover the broad strokes, but they're all good. And number three is the big one. It is a cliche to say that one size fits all, but you know, cliches sometimes exist because there's truth in them, and this is true, this is why it's here. One size doesn't fit all here. So I think that should be the overarching theme from this. In terms of where this goes, I would suggest that we certainly send it to MTC, A-Bag, our Board of Supervisors, our local supervisor for sure, our local legislators, League of Cities, and I wonder if you'd go out to the local press, too. Fortunately, one local newspaper has been covering this issue with some depth at least, but the PD has touched on some of the drama around this, some of the soap opera issues, but they've got nothing into the problems, why there is this level of concern and pushback. They just haven't touched that, and that's very disappointing. So, I, I don't think that's the depth of, I mean, it's impossible to craft a letter right now. I don't think you'd want a letter from us right now, not with my input what it would be. But I do think that's the place to start, I think that's the best idea I have for who it goes to, and I think our response should be, I believe there's an upcoming City Managers' meeting where you're supposed to have a presentation on this, I would encourage all the city managers to make sure in this month that they get some discussion of CASA in front of their councils and get a look at this, because this is twice now. We've had two independent looks at what these numbers mean, and it's not good. You can say goodbye to the city of Cattati as you know it, if this potentially goes through to the degree that the interests behind it wish it to. So, that's the best direction I have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you all very much. So, I'm certainly not going to repeat a lot of what my colleagues have mentioned because I agree with many things that have been said. Again, including the point that there are some really good parts to this larger compact, there really are, and I believe conceptually, a lot of that is good. So, I guess the only thing that I can add, not trying to be redundant, is, you know, would it be worth getting a cadre of, I'm just going to say mayors, but cadre of local electeds, depending on how different cities address this issue, march up to Sacramento and have a long conversation with our legislators? I mean, that's going to be the most direct impact. You know, getting a letter, it, it's important, I think we have to do that because we need to put our feelings, our comments, our concerns in writing. But I think it could be a very effective, I'd be willing to be one of those, very effective tool to go up and talk to them, set up a meeting in their office and face-to-face say, hey, here is Sonoma County, we weren't polled, but guess what, here's our opinion. And I'm not saying all nine cities are going to be vocal like this, we know of at least one other city that is right now, our neighbor next door, so I'm just throwing that out there. I'm willing to, you know, talk to the mayors, I'm willing to open it up to all mayors, council members, and just see, you know, would it be worth doing something like that? I think it could be effective, may not get us any traction, but I think it could be effective. They need to hear what these concerns are. So I'm just throwing that out there and seeing what you guys think about that.
That's the only way you get them to modify, that's the only way you get them to modify the, the bills that they're bringing forward, is to listen to your concerns, they're not passed yet, they're crafting them, some are in various stages, but that is the way that, that you kind of can steer that process a little bit. Can I have, can I say one more thing about just the general discussion?
Your microphone is on.
Is it, okay. Well, I just wanted to add. So, the other kind of elephant in the room that's really been there and was part of this, this group that did this, is that we've known for a long time, as everyone has known, developers, things have to pencil out for them. If they don't pencil out for them, then they don't build, they hold on to their property, which we have seen here, you know, sometime for decades, they hold on for property. And, and the reality is that, especially in this economy that we have here, is affordable housing doesn't pencil out. And so something different has to be done because it is never going to pencil out for developers, affordable housing. They only really want to do market rate housing because that's where they make their money. So.
Councilmember Landman, I think you were leaning in.
Yeah, I just wanted to strongly second your suggestion, I think that's a very viable and very good one. I think undoubtedly, without surprise, the League of Cities will be strongly against this, and I imagine those efforts will start just as soon, and will actually probably starting right now as legislation begins to form. But, so obviously, working with them in a structured group is, makes a lot of sense, but I think there's work for a mayor that's interested in this, or any council members that are interested in this, to start talking to your colleagues. We are limited by Brown Act limitations, but individually, you could talk to people at other councils, and whoever is interested in doing this, I think, or when we have mayors and council members next meeting, ideally earlier, we need to start talking about, we want to do this, let's get as many, I like the idea of mayors, it could be anybody, although mayors, you know, that has a little clout to it. And I think we should send one from every city we can get to go and agree we're going to go up and make as much noise as possible in this county. So I think that's a really good idea. So I would suggest working with the other mayors and working with Nancy Hall Bennett at the League of Cities. We'll be discussing this at Ledge Committee on Friday, I'm sure there'll be a lot of feedback, and I will be happy to share what I can from that with you, if that's helpful in any direction as well. But I think, I, I think that, that's obviously the next step, the first step is what is the response for the city, but obviously, since we were given a chance to have input, now it's become a legislative fight. So I think that's a fight we should strongly join.
Yeah, and I would, I would say at the Ledge Committee, bring up this idea of, what about a cadre of electeds from Sonoma County? Again, not knowing what other cities-
No cadre, hit squad.
What's that?
Hit squad, no cadre. We're serious.
Squad. I like cadre, softer. All right. There was something else I was, oh, a couple of things maybe that could go in a letter, too, that we really haven't talked about. One is, certainly, I think, so you mentioned the thing about a concern of losing, say, $2.3 million as an estimate. It's an issue, obviously, and those are larger amounts for the larger cities. But what about, you know, if this build-out occurs, where are the services? Where are the services and where's the money coming for those services? We'll need more police, the fire district is going to have to increase their staff, you know, there's going to be more needs for those services, and nobody seems to be talking about that, and that really bothers me, because that's not forward-thinking. People are not looking, I'm, I'm trying to picture, if there's this build-out, just in Cattati, let's just pick on Cattati, what, what is it going to look like here? What is it going to look like countywide in 30 years? I can't really imagine it. I moved here, from San Francisco, I moved here when I was 11, and that was, I can't do the math, but it was like 72, 61, 72, yes, 11. So it's 1972. I have seen a huge explosion of population in Sonoma County in all the years I've lived here. I mean, huge. I'll never forget the days of, I was legal, driving on Eli Boulevard, and I just, I vividly remember telling my mothers, we were going to work, you know, I just love this smell of cow manure. I'm just saying, you know, if it was that, choosing that over like a diesel smell, I said, this is awesome, I hope this stays like this forever, and poof, you know, it was gone in a flash. So, I think you've heard a lot of concerns tonight, from the public, from us, and I'm sure we've got something good to bring back eventually, bring back to a future council meeting. But I, I don't, I don't think we can wait for the next mayors and councils, that's not till sometime in April. I, I just think action has to happen sooner than that.
Yeah, so the deadline for new legislation to be introduced is May, or I'm sorry, February 22nd, I believe. So by then, we'll know kind of what's on the table legislatively. And, yeah, I would, I would definitely suggest getting ahead of all of that, and, and by the time we get to mayors and council members, hopefully, these other things will already be in motion, something at the league potentially, something with the mayors, and then this would just be a follow-up, you know?
Yeah, I, I'd be curious, too, if, if you have the time, if you reached out via email to your fellow city managers and see where every city is in this process. Have they looked at the CASA compact? If they have, what, if anything, have they put in writing about it? You know, it just, I, I don't know, besides, right now, besides Rona Park and Cattati, I don't know anybody else, and, and I don't know if you guys have heard, if anybody else-
Well, there's one indicator we saw at the last mayors and council meetings, six out of nine cities were willing to delay ratifying the process of the MTC seat and the A-Bag regional planning seats specifically because of that concern. So that's, two-thirds of the mayors already took a rather uncomfortable and difficult position simply because of the totally unprecedented nature of this. So I think, I think everybody's in the same place pretty much, Lee, I think you just got to talk to them.
Yeah. And I'll do my part as well, yeah, so thank you. Staff, is that enough direction?
Yeah, so I think, I think, I think so. And, so I'll be, I'll be working with the mayor, and we'll put together a letter, and hopefully in the next meeting or two, at the latest, we'll have a draft that we can talk about, and put the finishing touches on it. And, and I think it would be powerful, especially if we're able to come up with sort of the bones of a letter that maybe others, that might, similar, could, could use, other cities, I mean.
I think concerns would be very similar amongst other jurisdictions, just, again, I'm going to use that word, the scale will be different, but I think the concerns would be similar.
I would suggest a goal for the mayor or staff in this process would be a headline in our local newspapers in this county in the weeks to come, saying, great, you know, perhaps 100%, 90%, most cities in Sonoma County strongly oppose. I suspect that's an easily attainable goal because every person I've seen who has responsibilities for cities in this county is deeply concerned about the impacts for this county.
Yeah, just got to add something dramatic to it so it gets picked up by the newspaper.
Yeah, I don't, I don't write headlines, I don't do that stuff. Leave that up to others to deal with, so. All right, it is- It is 9:56?
[inaudible]
Okay, that's a whole nother story. Yeah, that's right. Thank you. It's 9:56. It's close enough to 10 o'clock that I would entertain a motion to extend our meeting beyond 10 o'clock.
So moved?
So moved. Oh, second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's a 5-0 to keep this thing moving. And we are at City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. No yawning yet. I'll be quick. So, since we all love acronyms, I have anyone for you tonight?
Oh, no.
What kind of groan was that?
It was, "Oh, no." Did you want me to say it louder? I don't know, I'm sorry. I'll enunciate better next time.
All right. I'll skip over the acronym. It's called the Popular Annual Financial Report. So, we've all heard of the comprehensive annual financial reports, CAFRs, right? That's the kind of A to Z, everything about the financial condition of the city that the last couple of years our Admin Services Department has been doing. And that's fantastic. The... One of the drawbacks is it uses accounting words, which people don't like usually, unless you're accountants, you know? It makes perfect sense to accountants, but to everyone else, it's like Japanese or something, you know? So, the Popular Annual Financial Report is a basically layperson's version of the CAFR, and much shorter. So Angela and her team recently put this together. It's now posted on the city website, and we're going to start telling people about it. But it's kind of a nutshell version of the city's financial health. And so I'm making copies available to all you, of course. It just is kind of hot off the press, but that is going on. And also, in Admin Services, we just finally got the e-billing up and running for our water and sewer customers. This enables completely paperless billing. So, you know, before, people are able to log into the website and pay their bills online. But this goes one step further and allows for paperless billing entirely, so you get basically the notification electronically, and then you can pay it electronically, but never dealing with any paper bill. So that's now available for all of our customers. On the Katati Facebook page, you may have noticed that some of our officer biographies are up, and these are some of our first three neighborhood officers are posted on there. And it goes along with our website that has the neighborhood zones and the contact information for each officer. And we're hoping that the residents and business owners in their zones will reach out to them, reach through the contact information, that's both on the Facebook page and then also on the city's webpage, to join them in a forthcoming neighborhood meeting. And also, just if they want to email them or call them about questions or concerns, they can do that, too. So they know who has the kind of the lead on their area of the city. They patrol everywhere, all our officers do. We're too small a city to have beats, per se, but there are zones, and so for the year, for 2019, that officer will be assigned to that zone, that neighborhood it's called. So, the idea is they get more familiar with the issues in that neighborhood, and they can be a go-to person for people in those neighborhoods. So, just to let you know about that. Also, you might have heard that one of our dispatchers, Christina Montoya, was selected as Representative Mike Thompson's Public Safety Hero of the Award, and she got that award this last weekend. And I was surprised to see Guy Fieri in there, or I don't know how you pronounce that last name. I've heard that people pronounce it differently, Italians.
Fieri, correct me?
I'm sorry, is there a concern with pronouncing Italian last names? Because we could have a discussion on that separately if you'd like, but...
It looks like the chief was looking for the expert on Italian pronunciation.
It was close enough.
Okay. So, anyway, I guess he fed the firefighters, and so he got honored, and then there was another firefighter that rescued some people. So, it was a really big honor for her, for helping get someone arrested that needed to be arrested before they did something bad with the guns they stole. And then, finally, as mentioned earlier, the cannabis RFP is out. The call for proposals is out. It's on our city webpage, and we'll be bringing it back in the next couple of months to discuss what we receive. So that's out there now. The Laguna Bypass Sewer P1, so trenching on Olrobit Highway has reached basically the end point, and now they're working on the connections. So they're connecting it up. And so with sewers, as you might think, you know, if you think about sewers for very long, you want to... Which you probably don't. You start at the downstream end, so you're down at, you know, the downstream end is Hellman by Lowe's. You connect that, and then you work up, right? You don't want to connect the upstream and then find your pipe full of sewage that you can't get rid of. So, anyway, you start at the bottom and you move up. So they're at the bottom, and they're working up, and I expect the bad weather this week's going to slow them down, but next week, it looks like a clear week, and they're probably going to get it mostly, if not entirely, connected at that point. And then the lighting project, the lights at McGinnis and Marsh are on, and they're burning in, so there's a seven-day burn-in for those, as well as the ones in La Plaza on the Scout Hut side. So those are the last bit of them, I think, except for one more light by the school street tunnel that has to be connected by PG&E, but otherwise, they should be all on at this point. On the recreation side of things, this Saturday night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we're hosting our Second Annual Sweethearts Fairy Tale Dance for children and families, and we'll have a DJ there, refreshments, crafts, photo booth, and plenty of opportunity to make memories as a family. Tickets will be available at the door the night of the event, but guests are encouraged to purchase them in advance to ensure that they have space. As of this morning, we already had 18 people signed up, pre-sold, so it should be good. And then, next Friday, if this is February 22nd, Farmster will hold their monthly Open Farm Fridays at Verona Flatty Ranch from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Guests are invited to come learn about what's happening on the ranch, take a tour, and work on volunteer projects during the afternoon. Farm Fridays are rain-or-shine events. I noticed the baby pig has appeared as of this morning, so, anyway. Baby pigs are cute. Or are cute. The grown pigs are gigantic, but...
Such a bias.
Yeah, you probably could put a saddle on those things and ride them around. All right. And then, during the week of March 18th to 22nd, during the school's spring break, we're offering our Camp Katati Spring Break from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, for families that are working and need childcare, something for their kids to do. So, we expect this to sell out as well, so please register early to ensure you have space. And then finally, if you have any questions about programs, you want to register or volunteer for anything, contact Ashley at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at katatcity.org, or go to the city website or Facebook page for more information on programming. And I will also say that the activity guide is going to be forthcoming very soon. It looks very cool, totally redesigned. It's very, very cool. So, I'm excited about that.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Questions? I will add, I was pleasantly surprised with Christina, the article that was in the Press Democrat. The only photograph from that event was her with Congressman Thompson, so it's like, "Score Katati. Good job." All right. Item 15 is City Councilmember Reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Landman. Have I balanced it out? You guys okay?
You've got it moving back and forth like a motor. It's good.
I know.
So let's make this quick. I've got two for you tonight. First, you might have heard, but this is kind of a big thing. On the 6th of this month, LAFCO, the Local Area Formation Commission, the commission with a funny name, actually began the mergers of multiple Spal Fire Districts in this county into one larger agency. This is an effort that started in the central part of Marin, an area surrounding the outside of Santa Rosa that, at least in land, is almost as big, if not bigger, than Santa Rosa itself. So that's the scale of what we're talking about. And then we'll then be looking probably northward and also to the coast. So this is a big thing. The former departments, districts of Windsor, Rincon Valley, Bennett Valley, Roslyn, and Mountain Fire combined into the new Sonoma County Fire District, which is somewhat confusingly named because it's not really the county. It is a separate fire district that the county does pay some money into so they can get out of being the fire protection district to a larger degree. But at the same time, they've brought together all these agencies and got all the efficiencies of scale they could combine from that, as well as either maintained or usually improved levels of service. And a quick shout-out, the person behind this is the new chief at Windsor. This fellow's name is Mark Hine. I've known him for about 30 years because he was the chief at Nevada Fire. I worked with him for years when he was a new paramedic, then my captain, then he became chief, and he retired, and then saw this challenge in this county where he lives and said, "Hey, we can do this." So he's been the one kind of pulling all these disparate threads together this year and making this happen. So, kind of amazing to see. It doesn't usually work that way. SETA, RCPA, a quick notice from the Regional Climate Protection Authority. Our last meeting, we actually signed an agreement to make Sonoma County RCPA the lead agency for the Water Bill Savings Program. You and I might remember it as Pay As You Save, which is currently in Windsor, but not just to run this in this county, but actually to be potentially implemented throughout the nine-county Bay Area region. So that's kind of a big thing, too. That's potentially good. Those are very small things. The concept, for those who haven't heard of it, is that they put forward deals where a homeowner or a property owner can see immediate dollar savings by investing in efficiency upgrades, and that's the goal. It only goes forward if you have something where, "Wait a minute. This is more efficient. You're going to save money right off the bat. How can you not put a little money up front to do this?" So, that combined over nine counties could be a good thing. So I thought we'd be interested in that. So we'll see where it goes in this county, too. Interesting to see. So that's what I got for you this time. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman.
I, on January 29th, attended the Homemakers Association fundraiser where they make a bunch of tamales. We take over our city day. I was a minor attendee, but they take over the kitchen at Frog's Home and just make tons and tons of tamales. It's a great fundraiser and very tasty tamales as well. January 31st, attended the mayor's and councilmember meeting, and then February 2nd, attended the chamber dinner where we honored the volunteer and local businesses, and so that was a really fun event. And that is all I have to report out.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey.
I do not have anything to report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore.
We just had the annual REMF meeting, and I will bring back that information at our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. I, too, attended those events that the vice mayor mentioned, and I just want to add about the chamber dinner, that our very own Dustin Di Matteo from Farmster, one Citizen of the Year, so that was very cool. And when I got there, we were told as we walked in that he was on vacation. He was on a family vacation pretty far away, too. I forgot where he went now. And it's like, you know, because last year, we nominated somebody, Stephanie Richardson, who did this amazing thing post-fire for people. And it's like, it's great to see these young faces getting in there and getting recognition, right? Instead of all these old faces getting in there and not getting recognition. And so it was really disappointing, and then all of a sudden, there he was. I said, "Hi, what did you do?" He goes, "I got here as quick..." You know, "We flew into Santa Rosa Airport, and I drove down here as fast as I could, straight here from the airport." It's like, wow. That just says a lot about him, so congratulations certainly to him. And with that, we will now go to public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman.
I want to point out that I am the public at this time of night. There is me, and there's the public, the community voice reporter. We've made it through. Okay. Some future agenda items. Homelessness, we still not getting anywhere. Weed abatement for the coming year. It's in your city code. You've not... For over three years, we've been asking for it to be a plan to be put in place. Nothing's happened. Please get that going. Senior services. My 82-year-old mother is getting really tired of going to Rona Park in Santa Rosa for all her senior citizens and senior centers. She'd... You know, old people don't like to drive. She would like to do things in Katati, but there is nothing for seniors here in Katati. We need recreation programs. We need things like that. Another thing I'd like to see addressed is the transit routes and paratransit and all that. Route 1011, it takes an hour to get to Rona Park. It takes... Sonoma County Route 44, 48, could take an hour and a half to two hours to get to Santa Rosa, with all the little places they go. Paratransit is impacted by where you guys have the... I mean, Sonoma County paratransit, where you have the bus stops. You've pretty much eliminated a lot. They have to be, to be paratransit eligible, you have to be within three-fourths of a mile of a bus stop, and so that has... They put a lot of people on the west side past... I'm like at the edge, right, where we are. There is a whole section of Katati that is ineligible for paratransit because there's no bus stop within three-fourths of a mile. What else do we need? I request a public apology from John Moore.[1727.21]